All right, let's call the man in order. Let's do Jacole Row, please.
Craig Romi.
Present.
Randy Graham.
Here.
Phil Lookins.
Here.
Dave Burris.
Here.
Jay R. Huddleston.
Here.
Linda Barbell.
Here.
Deborah Johnson.
Who?
Gary Tocum.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like me to pledge allegiance? My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For standing in your mind, your council, if you have a conflict of interest, please let everyone know. If you have a motion to approve tonight's agenda, make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Oh, thank you.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Abode? The motion passes. Can I get a motion to waive council pay for this special meeting?
I make a motion to waive council pay for this special meeting.
Target.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Abode? Motion passes. All right, so that brings us to communications from the public tonight. Do we have anyone that would like to address the council? Yes, that way.
Hi, I'm Ken Tomseger, or any of the party that doesn't know me, and I-
Hang on, just a minute, Ken. Our public comments, we allow five minutes to present what you'd like to speak to the council about, and then open it up for council to ask any questions beyond that, so the topic isn't limited to the total of five minutes.
Okay.
If they want to ask questions for an hour, they can do that, but we just ask that you share your presentation for five minutes.
Okay.
Do you have a participation, anybody else that could want to speak? I ask because showing support is great, but if they're here to reiterate what you're already saying, we're not going to go down that road.
Yeah, I got some I left.
Why?
You people that don't speak, I didn't hear much. Two or three?
Uh, one.
Oh, just one, Ken?
Yep.
Oh, then Ken.
I don't understand, it says on the agenda that it's five minutes per person.
Uh-huh. Speaking on the same topic, we have been consistent with all the other folks that have come to speak, we did with a lot of folks, and we're going to spend five minutes off everybody.
I'm sorry, it's a shooting.
Ken, go ahead, Ken.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, thank you. I've got new eyes, so I'm going to be adjusting back and forth, I'm afraid, but I want to thank you for the opportunity to address you today, I really do, and I don't want to not sit in your chair, I really am. It's a tough, tough deal, I've gone through budgets, it's not fun, it's nerve-wracking at times, but anyhow. You know, I just want to talk about the assets to the community, and you know, we've got water, sewer, garbage, help reduce diseases and costs of healthcare and everything else in the city, we've got police to protect our people and enforce laws, we've got, you know, the fire department, the street department, maintaining roads. But a lot of times you forget about what a big asset the fire department is, because we don't talk about ourselves much. We show up, we do our job, we go home. When I first moved here, Hot Springs was a protection class seven. At that time, I went to ISO, I said, "How do we get better?" Well, the only way is you've got to have a paid department to really improve yourself. Hot Springs Fire Department did. We've got a fantastic ladder truck, we've got excellent training, we do all of our training in-house, almost, so we reduce our costs wherever possible. Well, we've got, we've got structures, or structure trucks that are 30 years old, we've been repairing them, we got rid of two of them because we take it out on a fire breakdown, we go home and work on it a week, they're running again, take it out, break it down, and you get two, $3,000 for them. That's why you see them parked up and down I-90. So I went to be an insurance agent, went back to my insurance company and said, "What's the difference between the premium on a $250,000 house and a protection class five versus a seven?" Well, they didn't have any sevens that were in the area, and I didn't want to get too far out of bounds, and so we went with protection class 10. So if I'm living in town, I pay about $1,100 less than the guy out in the country, just on fire, the difference on fire. Everything else is the same, we've got a high area, or hail area, and that increases our costs, of course, but we have no control for that. There's other things that you can consider, you know, that's the median value of a house in Fall River County, in Hot Springs is $348,000. So if you take that, let's say the difference, and I wish I had actual numbers, but I don't, but let's say it's $200, $300, $400 per thousand difference, you take that times 350, and, excuse me, let's say a dollar or $2, a difference per thousand, how many millions of dollars in property value do we have here? How many millions of dollars in insurance premiums does the Hot Springs Fire Department save the individuals of Hot Springs? This isn't a cost that, yeah, you know, you can take it off your taxes, but guess what? If the fire department's not able to maintain that fire, this is an additional tax right on the policy owner. And you can call your insurance agent up, ask him, you can go to Misty, and she's probably got values of everything in town, but, you know, that's a lot of difference, that's a lot of money, that's millions of dollars in premium that's being saved because of fire. Another thing is, is, you know, there are a lot of things we do that our department doesn't have to do. We respond to auto accidents, we clean up the mess afterwards, so the street department doesn't have to, the police don't have to call in reinforcements, because we're working the traffic control. We're called to spills, you know, diesel, gasoline, we just had a gentleman fall off a bridge down here in a creek, we go pull him out. We have open houses, we go to the schools, we teach fire-wise programs. We're active in the community. We're in braids, we had a young kid that's disabled, we had a special braid for him, just because he loves braids, his own private braid. You know, there's a lot of testosterone that flows in that building over there, and they get, they can get kind of oily at times, but there's not a gentleman in that department that's not willing to go out and risk his life for anybody in this town. We're not, you know, we give you this budget, we knew it was going to shock you, but those are our expenses, and we've always been able to raise that money on our own in the past. But the young guys coming up now are all employed by the, well, most of them are employed by the feds or the state for rural fire, and so we've lost our income stream from being able to go out, raise money in the summertime. Most of the guys got jobs, I mean, employers are very reluctant to let people off to go fight a fire anymore, especially for a weekend at a time, and that's where we make the money, from the trucks. So, you know, we're just saying, we've got problems, you know, our insurance premium went up $47,000 last year, that's half our budget. And, you know, we're not, we're not blaming you, part of it was our fault, we didn't submit a budget for the last six years, or nine years, or whatever it's been. Another thing, we went looking for a contract, and I think the last one was 2013?
16.
16?
16, and it's two five, or one five-year renewal, it was a five-year contract with a five-year renewal, so we're good till March of next year.
Good for, oh, that's good, so anyhow. Well, somebody said that they thought they had one, but they couldn't find it, so anyhow. But, you know, I just bring these things up because there's a lot of things that you have to consider when you're, when you're making budgets and everything else, and it isn't necessarily what you're spending on, on your budget, but how much is it going to cost your constituents over time? I guess, you know, you guys have seen your own increases in your different budgets for the street department, or police department, or whatever, and expect the Hot Springs Fire Department not to have any expense increases, why, it's kind of ludicrous, too, you know, so anyhow, I just thank you for your time, if you've got any questions, if I can answer them, none of these guys can, I'm sorry.
Counsel, you got any questions? I hope so, this is an important topic.
It is.
I'm for giving them more money. I've seen the fire department for years, I know it's like, it's hard for them to make a living doing that and keeping everything up and running. I know $90,000 is a lot of money, but we've got to find it someplace, whether we cut something out of the budget, or we've got to find, probably not $290,000, I mean, that's, that's way out of our league, but I think that need more than $90,000. I know it's a hard ask, but that's what I'm saying personally, I think we need to give them more money.
I do, too.
Is the, is the fire department receiving any money from the county or any of the other districts?
We do receive from the Fall River Fire District, we split that money with Angostura. The other thing that we've got is mutual agreements with every other fire department in the county, except for Edgmont, we are the structure, as a matter of fact, if Edgmont has a structure, they pay us. So, and I realize that that's not Hot Springs' problem, but that's, it's just a mutual aid agreement that we have, and unfortunately, we're such a good department, we don't use very much mutual aid in return, unless it's a, you know, we have to have an extra water brought in, a tanker, or something like that, we use them, once in a while we'll have a guy show up with a brush truck, and they'll help. High and large, we're pretty much self-maintaining.
What is the county president, Bob? I know it's good to give the council off to ask some questions.
Okay. Thank you.
The thing with this fire department is, they don't bill people. They might bill your insurance, but they won't bill you because they're volunteers.
And that's something we may have to look at in the future, to be quite honest, and we may have to get a little more aggressive, we've got to go back and probably talk to council about, you know, we bill, we bill insurance companies, but they don't pay us, and I don't know why, but they don't. And I don't know if we've got a legal leg to stand on there, but that's one aspect we can take a look at. But, yeah, it's just, you know, when it, the main problem that we have is that we're sitting pretty good on our rural trucks, you know, it costs 180,000, we build a truck like that, we can build those ourselves, but a city truck is a totally different animal, and, you know, a bal douche is replaced every 20 years, and 500 to 800,000 for a used one, like, it's a little bit of money, and that's what concerns us right now, because what happens if we have a major breakdown?
How much did you say to replace, I'm sorry I didn't capture that.
500 to 800,000, 800,000 for a used one, probably twice that for a new one.
When I lived in Oregon, we moved into the area, and all of a sudden there was a knock on my door, and it was the local fire department, and they asked for our support, and kind of on the promise that, you know, we'd get faster service if we supported them. So, I don't know if that's something we should be doing, I mean, whether there's a fire tax, or, I don't want to call it a tax, but fire support that every citizen helps pay for this.
Our department used to go to the door years ago, when I first got in.
Something that would, I mean, and to know that they need to pay that every year, that's, you know, just part of living in the district, maybe, you know.
There's citizens in this town that provide us a gift once a year, and are pretty regular on it, too, and we're very thankful for that. Yeah, it's, I mean, it's just part of the way it is, as far as, you know, you're seeing the crunch, we're seeing the crunch, everybody's seeing the crunch, and it's just a matter of how do you, how do you balance that out, and how do you plan for the future?
And Ken, I want you to know, I think the council understands that the 2025 fire department is not the 19, I don't know how far back I've got to go, it's not the 1980 fire department where you ran out there with a pair of jeans and a pair of-
Right.
-canvas gloves and-
Yeah, all our bunker gear has got dates on it, we've got to change them out, I'm wearing an old set.
Yeah, you've got, and probably are trying to get dual sets of bunker gear and upgrade your SCBAs, and so you're, we understand your needs are, as a department, are greater than they were, geez, that's-
And we've been lucky so far, we've been able to get a lot of that stuff on grants, with the new administration and control of expenses there, like, we don't know exactly where we're going to be setting life, just like you don't know.
Yeah, that's, that's a common, uh-
Probably.
-known.
Yeah. Do you get any money from the county? We do. Well, the fire district, but not the county.
Yeah, splitting that with-
Angostura.
Angostura, that just took place about two years ago.
Two years ago, yes.
That, that was a deep cut, too?
Yes, that was, that cut us in half with them, so. And the thing there is, you know, when you're sitting at a fire, it seemed like an eternity for Hot Springs, for the fire department to show up, for the police department to show up. What was it, what was the response time on that fire, Bob?
It was just a matter of minutes, about 12, 15 minutes.
12 minutes, 15 minutes from here to Angostura, and there were two other fires that we had to peel the trucks off to fight those fires at the same time going out there. So, I mean, you can't ask for a better response time than what Hot Springs provided, especially as a volunteer fire department.
Are there any other sources of income out there? I mean, we have grants, or?
Whatever grants, yeah, we go after the grants we can get, we got, we bought some radials here with grant money, we had to update our radials, and we're still behind the eight ball on that, I think.
A lot of the grants were 50/50 or something like that, or not.
How many volunteers, one more?
38. 38 volunteers.
38 volunteers, and 28, 27 of them own houses, so we can't access them.
But again, you know, my emphasis is, I'm not saying the Hot Springs Fire Department's going to go away in the next couple of years, or whatever, you know, but if we do have a major problem, if we do have a major truck breakdown, we've got problems, and we don't have the money to do it, to replace it. And, you know, if we lose our number five, our class five rating, and our premiums go back to seven, it's a bigger tax on the, on the people in town than what, what we're asking for. What is your count on vehicles that you have for city and rural?
City and rural?
Yeah, like, ten city, five rural, what do you guys know?
They're both, use both directions, other than like, the city pumper don't leave city limits, but the one we have designated as a rural structured truck, that goes to city and county, but the number one pumper we have designated city doesn't leave city limits. I think it has once, in its career, and that truck's 30 years old, but it hasn't left town. There's the ladder truck, city one, rural one, that all respond in town, rural six is a more of a county truck, but it'll respond in town.
Rural four, for the place that has available water, really enough water.
So there's, you'll probably have six or seven trucks available for any fire in town.
And when you take a look at Hot Springs, you know, I was on the internet looking around, and, you know, Hot Springs is a high-notice area right now for, for basically the entire town to be in a fire danger, and rural trucks may be called rural, but we've got a lot of inner rural and urban interface along the edge of town, fire up over here, I mean, we had every truck on, I think, out there on that one.
So, are rescue one and utility one considered city trucks or rural trucks?
They're just, they're just our trucks to use for support.
Okay, all right. They're not owned, are they owned by the district, or by the city?
No, they're owned by Hot Springs Fire Department. All the trucks except for-
The tender, one of the brush trucks.
Four and six.
Four and six.
Four and six.
Our own land department. And the trucks that we have, a lot of them, when we build them and buy them, they're basically a multi-task truck, and I know you want to spend all night on like this rural six, it's a compressed air foam truck that they use on violent fires, but the pump on it is big enough that you can attack a structure fire with it. So that's why we use it in town, and like I said, we have multi, multi-purpose vehicles, we like designated for town, or grass, or rural, or, that's what we've got to do to survive, and if we start designating things, we won't have any.
Anyone else?
I'll bring up something that probably nobody really wants to talk about, but as you said, everything has gotten out of hand. All you gentlemen know that we just went through this major construction through town, we spent a pissload of money, you know that, nobody's keeping us, we've got expenses that are coming our way, that are mandatory for us, and I am just very bad on city council. Look, if you don't know me, you know I've been on and off, I've always supported the fire department and the police department, and this is just a hard question to ask, but I'm going to spit it out, can you guys make it one more year without getting an increase, so we can get at least healthy in town? We're starting this whole system off in deficit, and we just went through this whole process. I can't say, sitting here, that in a year from now, we can guarantee you 50, 60, you name it, amount of dollars increase, but can you honestly make it one more year? I know it's asking a lot, but you guys have done the same thing for as many years, and I know you've had hard years in the past, but we have to be totally honest with you, look you in the eye, and tell you that we don't have a whole lot of money to be giving out, we really don't. There's been arguments amongst us, and not bad arguments, but people would like to support other things, like the police department, the fire department, senior citizens, you put 10 diamonds together, you got a dollar, and we're not talking dollars anymore, we're talking hundreds, if not thousands. And so I'm asking straight up, can you guys make one more year at this budget, and we talk throughout the year, seeing what you need the most, and see what we can help you with? It's, it's just honest straight talk, I ain't been a BS yet.
Years ago, we gave, it was up to $100,000, we asked them to take a cut because-
And they did.
-we needed to give them less.
We promised the next year we'd go back to what they were, we never did, that's why
they've been at the same amount for-
Right. I'm talking about right now, I'm not talking about in the past, or, I'm talking about right now. If you've got a situation, you've got to work our way through it.
The hardest part on that day would be, we don't know, I mean, if, if something happens, no.
Right, oh, I understand that, this, just like the discussion we had last night, if something was to happen, if we did take on another police officer, we ain't got the money to benefit them, and that's why I don't want to increase anybody, that's why I don't want to hire anybody, that's why I don't want to give any more money away, because we've got to get our house cleaned and get in order. I can't look you guys in the eye and say that we can help you out right now, when we're, all we're doing is shooting ourselves in the foot for down the road. I'm asking for a year for us to get back in line with what is a balanced budget, and I'm not guaranteeing you nothing, I'm not saying that next year you can have your 190 or 290, I'm not saying that, I ain't going to lie to you, but the fact of the matter is, we've got to get our house cleaned up and back in order after this major faux pas, it's what the community needed, but nobody knew we was going to have price increases and burn your double the whole project, and you guys have went through the same process in what you deal with, so I'm asking you very honestly, you think we could swing it? If we have issues, I'm sure the council would be more than willing to sit down and talk seriously about valuing, or at least coming up with something, but the thing, the fact of the matter is, we've got to look at reality, too, and I know you guys have been dealing with less, and I understand that, but right now, it's a, it's a matter of getting our mess cleaned up, and it's not a mess as if somebody made it a wrongful decision, it's just the way the world is, and it turned on all of us at the same time.
Misty has a couple thoughts about where we might go from here, I'd just like to respond to Craig's comment, that both Craig and I said on councils that we're perfectly fine with only giving $90,000, we had opportunities to give more than, so both of us approve those budgets, hold it at 90, because we like the dollar million. My question for you, Ken, is, is it possible for you folks to get funding from individual taxpayers, much the same way that the Hot Springs ambulance does, that you can get something added to our annual property taxes, so that there is a known quantity coming to you?
We would have to form another taxing district.
But is that possible? Is that something to be looked at, to be considered?
I don't think the taxpayers would want us to go that way.
We have to set up a fire levy, and if taxpayers would pretty much have to vote for us to add tax levels, right?
But it is possible, so in my mind, the question needs to be asked, if they say no, they say no, maybe they say yes, but it does lighten the burden on you folks, and lightens the burden on us to get something like that taken care of.
And it's going to be a discussion-
We're going down that road and having that conversation.
I mean, it's probably something that we're going to have to come up in the future anyway.
But that's not a one-year process, that's a multi-year process, in my mind, I mean, without knowing exactly, it's not how it works, that's not going to be done.
It's pretty doubtful that-
A year from now, that's a five-year thing.
Well, it doesn't picture a real problem like that, but maybe it fixes future problems down the road. You know, I, I'm just, I'm not one that doesn't ask the question because you think the answer maybe don't, maybe it will be yes, maybe the taxpayers will understand, but that's something that's necessary. As a taxpayer- As a taxpayer, am I anxious to ask no? No. But I understand the need for life, like Bob might disagree.
You know, in this instance, I don't know if I would. I'm not happy with property taxes. I mean, I have not made it a secret. I am pissed about what my property taxes have done. I have formed a group. I have gone after the legislature. I've gone after the governor. I'm trying to get property taxes in. If you folks were to look at forming a taxing district, you might find a lot of public very sympathetic with your needs. And it isn't so much that, you know, yeah, we hate paying property taxes, but most of us understand what the property taxes go for. But it's when we see a hundred and fifty-eight percent over a three-year period, and we're looking at a three thousand to five thousand dollar increase from year to year, and you're retired and on the fixed income, where are you gonna get the money? That's where a lot of us are. But we understand the service that you folks provide. If my house catches on fire, I'm not gonna, I don't want to break out the hot dogs.
Yeah, for sure.
You know, I'd like to have somebody come out and put it out. If it means I'm gonna have to pay a little bit extra, I can see where that expenditure is going. So it might be something to think about. If nothing else, it would give you a, it would give you a foreseeable income stream?
It doesn't fix you...
It's not helping you right now.
I recognize that. But maybe it fixes it, even if it's five years down the road. You're at a point where you're going, okay.
I agree. It's something to look into. I mean, I think that...
Kind of counter that. I think it would generate probably a lot more money than a lot of people think, because of the property values and stuff in town.
What type of fundraisers have you tried to do?
Not to get pissed at here, but we're volunteers. Your police department are all paid. Your ambulance people are all paid. What do you expect from us to do? You want us to put your house out? You want us to do search and rescue calls, drownings, airplane wrecks, pull bodies out of cars? I'm tired of giving crap away. I just got done fixing one of the fire trucks, it cost ten grand, and I drove to Minnesota to get it fixed.
I understand the frustration, Bob, but what I guess, what I'm asking is, has there been, has there been a citywide approach of having people donate money to the fire department?
Not a citywide approach, no.
We have a friends of the library. We have a friends of this. We have a friends of that. Do we have a friends of firefighters in Hot Springs?
You know, we had a duck race for, what was it, New Year's or Christmas or something? It'll say off the Christmas parade.
Three quarts of ducks that were sold at the fire department. Yeah, nobody, nobody...
They're interested in donating.
All of our members pretty much bought ducks to donate to ourselves.
So let's go back on track, right? I'm asking, you know, consider additional revenue rather than just the city.
So in the future, I definitely think, you know, setting up a taxing task for the community is definitely gonna have to happen somehow.
The sooner you bring it up and crack that egg, the sooner people are gonna start to realize how serious the issue is. And by only vocalizing at a city budget, how many of you, very honestly, how many of you watch this? If you weren't here, how many of you would be watching this? You'd be reading it in the paper, maybe.
Maybe.
I'll watch it once in a while.
But what I'm saying is, this is when we bring it up, and this is when it becomes the topic. And this is the only time. It's time to crack that egg and make that topic a lot more public, and a lot more acceptable for a conversation with the whole community, not just once a year this time.
Would you guys entertain the idea of going back to the original budget for the next year?
I would like, personally, I'll tell you my personal feeling. I do not feel that we need to be spending any more money than we absolutely have to until we get ourselves on a straight question. Then we can honestly look you in the eye and say, this is what we've got for you.
Misty wants to...
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you.
No, I was letting all of you get it all out, because I talked to Mayor earlier about my idea.
I want to get to your thoughts about, you know, possible next step to get where we want to be. But I do have one more question. Asked it last night, just want to make sure. Council has your letter, you know, in their packets, so they've all seen it. Question I asked last night is, you know, totaling up everything that's on it. Is that your ask? Is the police, is the fire department asking the city to increase from ninety thousand to two hundred and ninety thousand? Are you asking them to come up with two hundred thousand dollars? I ask because, anybody that's followed discussions or the county commissioners when it comes to dispatch services, this is the same conversation that we were having with them. They, because of inattention to pass, to a contract that expired, it got to the point where, in the county commissioner's opinion, it was out of whack, and they needed more from the city. They wanted to get healthy very, very quickly. So when I look at this, the case that's made in here is that because we went from one hundred to eighty-five, to ninety, that there are past years that you feel the city owes you money for. And you're looking to get healthy overnight. You're looking to go from ninety to two hundred and ninety thousand, your total budget. Is that what you folks are asking?
You'll see on there, there's a fifty thousand dollar, I think, amount for trucks at the bottom there, yeah. You know, that's to start building up so that we can buy new trucks in the future. Do we need that right now? Probably not. But again, we've got money set aside that we can handle a fairly major repair on a truck. But if we had to replace a truck, there ain't no way, no way in hell.
You know, if we had a catastrophic failure of our ladder truck, that's the difference of being able to get people out of top of roadside, the top of Evans, the top of State Home. If that truck went down, I mean, how do we get them out there from the eighth, ninth, tenth floor?
Another, sorry, another thing we look at is, the NFPA has codes and standards, and our two frontline structure engines are five years past even supposed to, they're supposed to be retired five years ago. They shouldn't be used right now to be up to national standards. They should have been retired and replaced five years ago. So, I mean, we technically aren't even up to national standards right now with our two frontline apparatus that serve not just the city, but a lot of county.
And to replace one of those trucks new is one point two million?
Easily a million dollars to replace for a new one, but even used ones that are like ten years old go at least two hundred thousand, five hundred thousand dollars. It's crazy.
You may only have it for a short life because you're...
Yeah, they appreciate fifty percent, they say, in four or five years.
Yeah. And then you're up against the same.
So Misty, I think that's a good lead in.
Thank you, Mayor.
To what you and I discussed a little bit today.
I was gonna end with this, but I want to start with this. For those of you in the room, I speak on behalf of myself, but also the city, we value the volunteer fire department's role. It's really difficult for us to balance that and evaluate your needs with the requests within the context of our abilities, our financial abilities. But I did think about it all night last night. I knew this was gonna be something, I have talked to a few of you outside of these meetings, and I knew it was gonna be something that many of you are gonna wanna do. I personally recommend we increase the 2026 contribution to the hundred thousand dollars that we used to provide. I recommend funding that by reallocating the five thousand from HPC to the volunteer fire department, and then also five thousand from the Boys and Girls Club. That still provides, five thousand for Boys and Girls Club, but takes away the funding for HPC this year. But would allow a small increase to show what we say we all feel. In addition, I recommend a meeting between representatives of the volunteer fire department and administration and finance of the city. These should be happening probably a little more regularly, definitely annually, but maybe even shortly after this meeting. So we, sorry, so we can discuss one-time additional funding needs, such as equipment and protective gear. Those requests, if they come to us clearly defined, well researched, and ready for action, the city could take an opportunity to see what we might have available that's not part of our annual subsidy or regular request for those one-time things, and maybe have a bigger role in supporting these unexpected or very large expenses that you might have. Now, nobody here, nor I, can make promises for future councils. So if council promised to go back to a hundred thousand, and they didn't stand the council and make sure that happens, that's nobody's fault here. It's not your guys' fault you didn't come talk to us. We're gonna put all that behind us. But going forward, I believe these recommendations show our intentions when it comes to the volunteer fire department and some of the other things that were shared. We table this and take some out-of-the-budget meeting conversations between the city and the volunteer fire department, see how we can strengthen the support when we're able. I think that would be a good step forward.
One other thing I'd like to maybe bring up is that, there for a short period of time, there was a representative from the council that would show up at our volunteer meetings, which is the second Tuesday at seven o'clock of the month. And we still have training or work nights every Tuesday. It's starting at six-thirty usually. And you guys are more than welcome to come. More than welcome. We have nothing to hide. We really don't.
I don't think anybody here thinks you guys have been stashing money either, but...
And I'll back that up, but I think you will all agree that we value these guys.
Oh, yeah, a hundred percent.
I just wish we had, the comment you made last night, the golden egg. Don't I wish we had that? We could make everybody healthy. We could do the right thing. But I also have to come back and agree with you. We gotta get budgets sound, and we're not.
We're not. And it's not like it's because of a long process of making bad decisions. It was we were hit at the worst time with the worst situation. And you guys know that. Everybody in this community knows that. Everybody in this country knows it. And we're just trying to get away healthy. That's why I, I don't like asking it, but I'd rather be very honest with you and straightforward. I'd rather have your respect and show your respect by asking an honest question. If the hundred thousand, if we can come up with that, I'd be all for that. Because basically, we're not asking to take away from something that we absolutely need. We are cutting back on certain things that we can go back to later, but at least funding you to show you that we do support you. But I have to admit, coming once a year to this is not doing us any good or you any good. So that egg needs to get cracked. However you guys decide you want to do it, you want to come once a quarter and discuss things that are coming up that you know is gonna be a problem, or if you want to do it once a month, it doesn't matter to me. But information both ways will go a long way to helping each other. This thing of a distance until budget time, it doesn't do any of us any good.
I remember like, at one time, the city had a committee together to deal with fire department. You know, we'd have meetings and stuff with numbers in the fire department.
The contract speaks to that, and both sides have not been responsible in ensuring that it happens. We didn't reach out to them. They didn't reach out to us. So both sides need to take ownership of the fact that those conversations haven't happened. But what's being suggested now is that they do have them.
Yep. Moving forward.
It was basically a failure to communicate on both parties. I don't blame them on this.
I'll be in the...
I'm not sure when it started breaking down or how it started breaking down, but...
I ain't gonna worry about blaming anybody or any particular time. I'm just saying, from this point on, we need to be...
I think what Misty is offering is where we need to, you know...
Start?
Start and maybe finish tonight and move, because we have a lot more to be going on tonight as well. But, you know, I really do want to support you guys. I really think the tax increment thing is something you guys really need to look into. I would vote for it myself. I'd pay something every month, or once a year, or however, to support you guys. I think every citizen in this town should do the same thing, though. I think the whole town should be supporting you.
I totally agree with what you're saying, but I think you might find some resistance when it comes to the businesses and...
Well, like he said, you gotta ask.
Yeah. And I understand that.
And you gotta put the process forward.
A couple percent of a million dollars is definitely different than a couple percent of three hundred thousand.
Right. Yeah. I would give you the two ninety in the next second if I could.
We'll take it.
If I could. But I think what Misty has said is a place to start, and then you all start getting together and bringing things to city hall, that you might be needing throughout the year, and we'll see if we can help you out, and we'll build that relationship back up.
Counsel, any more questions?
Nope.
I'd ask you to follow your questions until counsel. Do you have any other quick follow-up questions, your colleagues?
No, I don't, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I appreciate, my intent in asking only one of you to, you know, make the presentation was not to exclude anybody else, you know, offering. I hope you saw it wasn't almost opening discussion, giving you plenty of opportunity to answer any questions if counsel has. I'm not looking to, you know, slightly step this in any way, but we do have quite a full night ahead of us. Do you have anything else?
I think we're starting off on the right foot.
Well, I recognize you didn't get the answer that you were hoping for, but you feel we at least listened openly and honestly and answered your question.
I would, too.
We're there every Tuesday night. Why don't you folks stop down once in a while, and give layers of group and look at what we got? And what we're trying to replace, so you can actually see instead of just here at the table and saying, no, we didn't got it. We need to be able to physically see what we're talking about.
We identified that, Bob, that both sides have been at fault for allowing that to happen, and both sides want to correct, want to correct going forward. So if you want to live in the past, you're not gonna get us into the future. So, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you guys do.
Feel free to stay and listen to the rest of the presentation if you want to see what we're facing. We'll be here till about ten, probably.
That's why you gotta get your big bucks.
Sorry. You got a big bucks, yeah. Thank you, Misty.
Second Tuesday.
So I add it to my notes, and it will come down to who wants another committee assignment. We'll have that discussion.
Should I get us started off after that? Pass the public comments and then to the... Any other public comments?
Yeah, any other public comments?
If I could make a quick one, and bear with me here for just a second, I kind of want to second what Carl said last night. You know, I, it's been a few years since I sat through a budget hearing with you folks, but personally speaking, I think I am seeing one of the best councils and mayor administrations that I have seen in the last twenty-six years of being in Hot Springs. The way that you folks can discuss, agree, disagree, it's awesome.
That I appreciate.
Would you pass that around?
As much as I could.
Yeah, let them know. We're just not here because of our...
I kind of was thinking about things after we departed last night, and I was thinking that, I mean, I know, you know, we really didn't want to do the police budget last night and all this, but I think we have things that we're responsible for because they are a city entity, and the plunge and the golf course and all this. And I think we should hold off on, like Prairie Hills Transit, the senior citizens, and economic development, until we get our budget set, and then find out if we can have, or can come up with a balanced budget, and then see what's left over to put in those other entities that have come forward and asked for money. and then see what's left over to put in those other entities that have come forward and asked for money. I don't know if anybody agrees, but.
I have a question. Does that include the HPC allocation then? Because it's not a separate entity that the committee of the city just approved or thought as we go forward in conversations tonight.
No, it was written into the ordinances that the city is supposed to support them.
We do support them. They are a function of the city, and they are fully supported by the city.
Mentally, not financially.
So I was gonna say this, but if I can have a moment. I recognize the value of the work done by each of our committees, but it's important to consider that the city has several boards, committees, and commissions, many of which operate effectively and efficiently without any direct financial allocation. So we provide dedicated funds to just one of them. Think about the perception and the inequity you're creating. Consistency and fairness is always gonna be my argument for these types of projections. And although they are important and they do serve a very important purpose in our community, many of our other boards and committees and commissions do as well.
I just have one comment to that, and I do agree with Misty. I really like to agree with Misty. I don't like to disagree with Misty. But the majority of our other committees don't need to be funded because they're a representation of the facility that they're a committee for. So the plunge committee, the plunge has a budget, and the golf course committee, the golf course has a budget. So.
Buildings budget, government buildings budget.
Just in parks, Parks and Rec, there's a parks budget to help guide all of these things. Just that's my comment for focusing on park preservation.
I'm understanding the point that Linda is trying to make is that those budgets that we've already been through and approved are budgets that do we really need to fund them as much as we need to fund a police department or a fire department or whatever? So the willingness to go back to them and say, okay, we gave them this much, but now based on where we are with the police department or the fire department, we may need to reconsider, as Misty was talking about, pulling some money away from departments that have already, you've agreed to.
Well, we didn't make a determination on any of them. Once I talked about, we bumped it to talk about PD.
But I think that's the point Linda is making, is being open to pushing those back.
Absolutely no problem with that.
Where we ended up last night was with the police department, a very spirited, robust conversation to Carl and Bob's point. Very adult conversation, so thank you for that. But last thing that I've asked you folks that were not in support of the initial officer is to reach out to Chief Norton and see, ask questions of him and see if your opinions of that request would change. So did any of you do that? And did any of your opinions change?
Yeah.
Sorry, I talked to him, but my opinion don't change, because it's gonna be hard to balance a budget, isn't it?
I have to say, no, I did not talk to him. We did have other things going on today, plus my personal life. But even if I talked to him, to be totally honest, my vote won't change.
Randy?
I did talk to him, and I am gonna change my vote.
Can you explain why?
Pardon me?
Can you explain what you learned that made you change your vote?
Well, we discussed a whole host of things, but a lot of it, you know, with the overtime, that's not gonna, that's not gonna pay for what they're asking, but it's gonna cut it down substantially.
We don't necessarily, I thought we all talked about that last night and agreed that that wasn't gonna necessarily change.
Well, he had a different opinion. So, and the rates of incidents and the increase in in- increase in the people being more aggressive now has really changed the... And then there's the police officers that with their schedule, they've acquired a lot of time off, and they can't take the time off.
Now, Chief told me they are taking their time off.
I, um...
They're acquiring, too many of them are acquiring too many days off, and they can't take their days off.
I had a text conversation with them today, and I said, I told him that I would support him in a nanosecond if we had the dollars, and I explained that I worked in an ICU with twelve-hour shifts, and we had to have a minimum of two people on duty at all times, and there was eight of us on the schedule. And we had to put the annual leave, the vacation time, we put the year-long calendar out on the desk, and we all, only one person could be up at a time. And so, but we were able to like squish our days together so we could get five days off in a row without needing vacation time or whatever. We were able to do that. And granted, you get someone who's injured or long-term, you know, recovery from surgery, whatever, that pitches you with going down to seven. So that does bring in overtime that they have dealing with, because they do have somewhere to down. And I would support this really next year if we could, but then he came back with the argument that we have a four-point-five million dollars in unassigned fund balance, and that what he is asking for is two percent of that balance, and he's looking at us paying off the plunge in four or five years. And so that is going to increase the amount of money we have on hand to pay for the extra position. And that he doesn't see having to pay fifty-five thousand dollars average in overtime over the next three years if he has that extra position. He has a great staff with great retention, and he wants to maintain that. So I said I'd take that into consideration. So I just wanted to throw that out there. I asked Misty, I said, you know, what was our unassigned balance before the road project? I just wanna know how much we need to have in the savings account to feel comfortable and not to be stealing out of it, because every budget I've been at since I've been in the last five years, we've taken out savings. But when I look back at what the general fund has in it, in nineteen, there was three million, three-seven, three-six, five-one, and I think we had grants going in on that five-one and five-two, and now we're sitting at four million, one-hundred-twenty-seven. So we do have some money in the bank.
Your budgets at those times equaled those amounts. Your budget today equals the amount, so.
Is that what the budget equal is?
Yeah, so in twenty-nineteen, your general fund budget amount was two-point-eight million. In twenty-twenty, it was two-point-six. In twenty-twenty-one, it was three-point-five. So as you look at those today, your proposal for your expenses is four-point-one million. So yep, things have gone up. You have more unassigned fund balance, which pays your expenses until your money comes in. So have your expenses. So there's, it's, you're essentially comparing the same things. So you can't keep saying taking from the savings that grows with expenses.
But I'm just saying, we're not sitting pretty. We're not.
And I had similar discussion with the chief and pointed out that the Evans Plunge is not part of the conversation. Evans Plunge is an enterprise fund, so I got that at some point it will be generating revenue when it doesn't go into the general fund. So to say we would have more money available for the police department because Evans Plunge is generating revenue isn't the way that it works.
But we won't have to be, well, and we have it for the last to use that to supplement them because they've made enough money for the last three years.
You have in your budgets, though.
And my biggest concern is starting to move towards savings being an expected revenue source. That because we're short in the general fund and we have savings, let's just start treating it like revenue. It'll, you know, why don't we then add it to our revenue stream? We've got four-point-five million or whatever it may be, you know, sitting there that will just pull off as revenue. That's not what it's there for. That's not what our savings at home is for. We don't mortgage or finance a vehicle for five years, knowing that we're gonna make the payments out of savings. That's the road we start going down, and we look at taking the money out of savings to pay for expenses.
That's why companies go bankrupt. And they don't seem to understand, once they're in that position, it's not like you're gonna pull yourself out. I've always looked at the city as a nonprofit company. The only money that you're making is what you're gonna be spending next year. And if you're fortunate enough, you're gonna have enough income that you could possibly disrupt a normality and add a new function to your business. And that is what we are talking about when you're talking about hiring another policeman. It's not like we're paying the person sixteen dollars an hour and they're producing something like that. We're talking major funds, and it's an investment into the person, just that person.
I do recommend we continue a focus in twenty-twenty-six to identify savings or new revenue sources and fund this position once again.
I agree a hundred percent.
I agree with both, obviously with Dave and the mayor about balancing your budget. We hope to exceed revenues, but that's not a guarantee. We are realistic. You had an opportunity when we went through and to change any one of those, and you did not find any areas. Well, five-hundred-and-twenty-five bucks, but that's not gonna pay for a police officer. And I respect and appreciate your focus this year on balancing the budget. I really do, because it's been something that we haven't been able to do, and I don't wanna see us continuing down the road.
Ever you had conversations, you haven't said whether you changed mine or not?
I am going to not change mine. So I don't know what is, what this year.
So of the four, we have one change nearby. Randy, are you still supportive of the position? Anyone else?
Can I ask you a question, Randy?
Sure.
Where do you propose for us to come up with all this money?
Well, I'm not sure about that.
That's the hard question.
But before you make your vote, I think we should consider that. I'm not trying to pick on you, just to take it that way. When I go to board meetings, I talk to everybody the same way. Everybody has the same thing. But in this case, I have to also say, if you're gonna come with a complaint, then come also with your idea of a solution. So in this case, please think about what the solution is that go along with that vote.
So how about we do this? What I wanted to get in front of everyone was that there is a way to get much closer to the structurally balanced budget. That's by not funding this position. So let's go through everything else that we need to. We're talking about increasing the fire department budget, and let's have all the other discussions. We'll save this one to last and see if we're still at one-twenty-seven or one-thirty-five or one-fifty, recognizing there is a way to get.
You didn't ask Gary what his, his yes or no.
Well, it's because he was, yes, he was yes yesterday.
Did he change?
No. Did anyone, okay then. Has anyone else changed?
Well, in twenty-twenty-four, we paid seventy-five thousand, six-hundred-twenty-seven dollars, seventy-nine cents for the time to please the department. So a new police, if yours, you know, cost about eighty, fifty-seven dollars.
Let's round it up to a hundred, Carl.
You know, a hundred thousand. So we're looking to actually fund a budget of twenty-five dollars.
So overtime will continue. We did not get a guarantee of no overtime. It will continue.
Let me continue to talk if I can.
Sorry.
Twenty-twenty-three, we paid a hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars for that set. So we went down, and I also had a text conversation with the chief today. And though he cannot guarantee that, and he did not guarantee that there'd be no overtime, he thought could be significantly reduced. And taking Matt's word on that, I think we need oversight and accountability, see that that in fact does happen. And I'm listening to everything that David was saying. I'm listening to everything the mayor's saying, and him saying, and thinking everything. I'm just, I'm kinda leaning towards leaving the pause button right now, putting this off for next year. If I could, I'd give everybody everything that they asked for plus two percent. But I'm just, so I'm gonna, but that's for him back right now, so that's the only thing I'll do.
I have to remind you that decrease in overtime was largely due to the adoption of the FLSA overtime exception rule allowed for law enforcement that allowed them to go up to eighty-six hours. So if that had not changed, you would not have seen the decrease in overtime hours, because overtime is now not paid for the six hours between eighty and eighty-six, Linda.
They also went to twelve-hour shifts, too.
But then, I'm just saying, the number of hours they worked did not decrease as much as it was.
All right, I think what we're talking about then, let's go through the rest of them. We now know where there is a significant saving to get us closer to a balanced budget until we begin looking at the others. We, in my mind, we're now at, if this position was approved and the recommendation, which everybody seemed to be on board with, well, it was offset, it was to increase the police, the fire department by ten, but that was offset by not spending five and five.
Can we start the other way around? Because I already took it all out last night. I can add it back in, but can we start where we're at now, knowing that we're still four and four, it sounds like? So can we start the other way and know that we can add back in the ninety, seven, four, thirty-eight, so I don't have to go in and out all those again, since we're still four and four? And then, this would be a good time for a break.
I haven't changed my mind.
I haven't changed my mind.
And then we have a request for a little break.
There's a right now. I haven't changed my mind.
Oh, I thought you said you were leaning towards changing your mind.
Thinking that I didn't realize that. I thought we were gonna wait till goddamn week long. So I'm still, I'm sorry, folks, but I'm trying to think this thing through.
Oh, right, but last night you were a go.
Yes.
So that's the reason I didn't ask the people who were
That's correct.
were a yes last night. I was asking the people who were no's to see if they had changed.
I guess we're gonna go from one last night to a yes. All right.
Well, breaks, absolutely. Everybody? Let's do a pause call.
Can I ask this question, and I'll go on break? Go ahead.
Is it a question that should be asked?
No.
Probably.
No. Carl.
Want to get started, yeah?
All right.
Can we take it away?
Take it away.
All right. So I'm gonna start with the twenty-seven, three-twelve, but I created an equation. I'm talking about total dollar amount in the general fund that we're in a deficit. I created an equation just to add in that officer, so we could see both numbers as we're going through. I have a list of the departments we still need to talk about in the second night. But not that I wanna spend more time talking about the fire department, but is everyone okay with me changing that to a hundred thousand at this time? And then going back and looking at the economic development budget with those changes in mind?
Are there any in agreement to pull back those funds to come up to a hundred thousand? Is anybody of it? No on it?
I'm willing to give them a hundred thousand, we'll discuss that.
Okay, so I'm changing that one to a hundred, and we'll move on from there. The other one that I wanted to revisit from last night is related to street lighting. Talked to Jacqueline about it a little bit this afternoon. That is on page... Which?
Oh, I'm just talking.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Street lighting is on page fourteen.
Lighting is where we're at?
I'm sorry?
Street lighting is where we wanna go?
Yep. It's specifically the repairs and maintenance. So in twenty-twenty-five, we budgeted fifteen thousand, and that was to repair a light pole that was hit by a driver, and we weren't able to identify who hit it and knocked it down. And yep, that's how much one light pole costs per place, roughly. And yep, that's how much one light pole costs per place, roughly.
I don't know what page is the lighting room?
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Um, it's still unspent, so I sent an email asking about that. But typically when those kind of things happen, the insurance of the driver reimburses the city the cost of the replacement. I was surprised to see twelve thousand budgeted again in this year without hearing that there was a light pole that needed replaced specifically. And Billy's out. But after talking with Jacqueline, we're both comfortable dropping that to three thousand, knowing that you may have to talk later about using contingency or on the side fund balance. If somebody hits a light pole and it gets taken out and we don't know who they are or we can't bill their insurance. But we don't need to budget for those kind of unknown things. So we're both comfortable, if you're all comfortable, in dropping that number and saving us an additional ten thousand in our general fund.
Has this been replaced, this pole?
Well, we have fifteen thousand in the budget for this year to replace that pole I was talking about that got damaged last year.
Did they replace the pole yet?
No, but they have fifteen thousand this year in their budget to get it done. That I know of. I, I guess I don't, I don't keep track of all those poles, but we shouldn't have to budget for it again next year, is my point. So if you're all okay with that, we can take ten thousand and change that twelve to two. Any objections to that?
None.
Okay. So now I don't want to talk about any of them that we've already talked about again. I want to move on to the ones we haven't got to talk about yet. And so I'm going to start at streets, which is two to the right of the street lighting and two pages ahead. So page eleven in your worksheets. Um, clothing for public works employees, which includes all maintenance and utilities was changed. We talked about that in another department last night. A hundred dollars for a full-time employee, fifty dollars for a part-time employee. And then, um, there's a couple of other things we'll note as we go through here. Salaries and wages, you remember my spiel about having to split those the best we can through all the maintenance people. I have four hundred and four thousand, thirty thousand, nine twenty-five for payroll taxes, twenty-two, six seventy-five for retirement, nineteen-five for workers' comp, ninety-two thousand, five hundred for group insurance, twelve hundred for unemployment, eighteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars for SDPAA insurance, services and fees of sixteen thousand. That's higher than you've seen historically because in addition to the random drug testing, fire extinguisher testing, recharge, delivery fees, special services, our technology fees, they're looking for ten additional thousand to do some ass. Asphalt and concrete crushing.
You said dog film.
Vehicle repairs of ten thousand, building repairs of thirty-five hundred. I do, I did question this. I'm not sure I got a response, but we had in our 2024 budget, door seals, handles and locks. We put it back in 2025 because it hasn't been completed and we're asking again for it in 2026. So I'm just wondering when we're going to do it.
I thought I answered you on that, that Billy was okay. Not the one thing we asked to drop, right?
Oh, I, I might have missed that. So I still have thirty-five hundred. So what amount could we drop that to? Uh, historically, in the year they first asked for it, they spent five hundred dollars roughly and then two thousand, twenty-five hundred. Um, if something significant should happen to their building, insurance will probably be involved or we can discuss that. But for regular maintenance and repairs, what's a more appropriate number?
I thought they discussed fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred. Everybody okay with changing it to that? I'm not perfect. We could have discussed that and they could have missed it. So thank you.
No, it's okay. I'm trying to remember if I brought it up.
So I'm bringing that one down two thousand to fifteen hundred with no objections. Equipment repairs, we have thirty thousand. You know, that sounds like a lot, but there's always something that breaks. But if you wanted to talk about a lower dollar amount in there and addressing, no, leave it. Fifty thousand for street walk repairs. We had a big conversation around this because he wanted a lot more because he's in charge of the streets and he wants to see more done. And I know a lot of you can agree with that. But historical, so we did increase it. We increased it to fifty thousand and I promised him that we were putting a hundred thousand in the two-one-two fund, which historically has been the place where we pay for the major projects. So when we get to that one, you'll see a hundred thousand for street repairs for a total of a hundred and fifty thousand for him to use in 2026. It's still not very much, but we're getting better.
Now, when you're talking about patchwork and.
But he initially asked for it and we kept it in there. We just moved some of it out of the general fund as an expense to get ourselves.
So there's a hundred thousand in.
Two-one-two.
In two-one-two.
To go along with his fifty thousand here. And if you look back historically, what's spent, you know, in 2022, we spent thirty-six hundred. So we're going to be making some big improvements hopefully with this money and making a dent in the.
What did we spend last year?
Uh, sixteen thousand.
They didn't do anything last year because they were so busy on the road project.
They're finishing up with those road projects.
When did we do?
We did a hundred and fifty a couple of years, three years ago, I think.
Got up on top of the hill, above the plunge on that street up there?
Not out of this budget, that would have been the two-one-two budget. So I'm going to move on. Supplies is six thousand. Four thousand of that is for a new mag water setup. Clothing, nine hundred, PPE, five thousand. So we've always provided it, but new in 2024, we moved it from supplies. So safety routine PPE is all going to be paid out of here, including any boot purchases, Arctic boots, hearing protection and steel toe or composite boots. Will all come out of that PPE, five thousand. Janitorial supplies is fifteen hundred, minor tools is four thousand, gas, oil and diesel is eighteen thousand. They have five thousand for new traffic signs. Travel and conference, we have a thousand. Telephone, twelve seventy-five.
Can I go back to new traffic signs?
Yep.
What are those? Because don't we, with our, um, project, we're getting all these signs and locate, you know.
Midway sign.
Maybe it's to replace some of our existing signage. Is that correct?
Right. Yeah. That's, I mean, that's all of our, like, general traffic control signs. Our wayfinding sign, it's, that's a completely different thing. I mean, that's just.
When people start running over the crosswalk signs.
The stop signs. Yeah.
We're stealing them to put them inside their barn.
Um, I think I was on electricity for nine.
Do we really need four thousand dollars in minor tools?
Yeah.
Yeah. Historically, yes.
Yeah. Electricity, nine thousand, propane, fifteen thousand, six hundred for cell phones. We just have a smartphone for the superintendent and the mechanic. Computer software, six seventy-five. And then we are on year five of six for the JD, uh, John Deere wheel loader. So we have thirty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-three, um, principal and two thousand, two hundred and twenty-five for interest. And so we'll have one more year of paying for that. But if we don't end up buying more equipment for them, there's an additional thirty-five thousand in a budget that we may have to utilize for an additional officer in previous year. But even after this year, you have one more year of paying that off. Um, for a total of eight hundred thousand, five hundred and three dollars with that two thousand dollar decrease. And I'm going to check that one down. And we're going to move on to the airport, which is now one, two, three, four, five tabs to the left and it should be a similar number of pages in your workbook. Airport starts on page seventeen. Um, airport also has the major projects funded out of the two-one-two fund. So as you look at the airport fund and think about all the big projects we've had going on out there, you won't see many of those expenses in this general fund department. These are basic operational expenses. So this airport manager, starting in the 2025 budget, part of twenty-four and then starting in twenty-five budget, he doesn't want summertime, part-time help. Um, that was previously scheduled for sixteen hours a week, May through August. So you see a decrease, um, in previous year's budgets and then just a small percentage increase over 2025. Forty thousand, five hundred, payroll taxes, thirty-one hundred, retirement, twenty-four, thirty, workers' comp, fourteen, twenty-five, group insurance, eleven thousand, six hundred and three dollars, one hundred and seventy-five dollars for unemployment, eight thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars for the SDPAA insurance, three thousand and services and fees. So that MSA is our multi-service aviation. Those are processing fees for fuel sales. Then they have fire extinguisher inspections, then an air nav fee, and then their black hills technology fees. Vehicle repairs is a thousand. Uh, he does want three thousand dollars for building repairs and maintenance and is looking to paint the terminal building. When we met his department heads, he said he could take that out, but it's so small and so little goes into the airport that the majority of the department heads wanted him to leave that in. So we have, and we should be keeping up with our existing infrastructure. So we left that in. Uh, equipment repairs and maintenance is six thousand, fifteen hundred for supplies. Here's the big expense in the airport, but I told you it was tied to an offsetting revenue, seventy-five thousand for airport fuel. So the way we work, um, the accounting, when the fuel is purchased, it's still considered an asset. Until it's used, we don't consider it an expense. So we have an asset on the books for the fuel we have on hand. When they sell it, we recognize the revenue and we then expense the cost of the fuel as well as the processing for the MSA. So you, sometimes I get questions from council members right after we buy a big load of fuel because they're expensive and this number doesn't drop significantly. I just wanted to explain to you how that's accounted for. Five hundred dollars for janitorial supplies, five hundred dollars for minor tools, two thousand for agricultural supplies. That's weed spraying, chemicals and noxious weed control, twenty-five hundred for gas, oil and diesel, five hundred for travel and conference, twenty-six hundred for telephone, ten thousand, five hundred for electricity. And I am estimating the new tea hangers as each unit has electricity, but there's only one combined city meter. So, um, I've taken the last few months. It could go up. We could, I'm not sure if we're full yet at the tea hanger. Bill, do you know who we are? So those are pretty good estimates then. So I have ten thousand, five hundred estimated for electricity.
Did we put that in the rent so much?
Wait, the rent is higher in the tea hangers than it is in. Um, seventy-five hundred for propane, seven hundred and fifty dollars for water. The reason they have an expense is because their water comes from Fall River Water Users. Uh, three hundred dollars for the manager's smartphone, sixty-six dollars for computer software. So we have a total in the airport of one hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars.
Miss, you could ask a quick question on minor tools?
Yep.
Is that a new, is that a new item to them? Because I don't see any past history on expenses for minor tools there and yet it went to five hundred dollars.
Yeah. Previously there are. Um, you just don't see it on these banding reports, but in Excel, it was eight forty-two, eight eighty-three, eleven seventy-two. Thank you. Good question.
I have a question on the, um, snowplow on, snowplow, three mowers, tractor, truck. That's all fuel for them?
That's his fuel estimate. Yep. Yeah. I mean, that's, and it's much lower now that we don't run out the courtesy cars.
Right.
That answers it.
Yeah. Okay.
But how does gas get in those cars? Because he lets people use them.
He has a tank.
They generally.
Fill it up.
Courtesy, they fill up when they return.
All right. So the next one is going to be cemetery. That's just one tab to the left on your Excel spreadsheets and one more page. Um, so we're starting on page eighteen. Cemetery has one full-time and one part-time seasonal. Uh, they are shared employees, so this one sees a decrease of nine percent, uh, just because of the way we allocated the sharing this year. Fifty-five thousand for salaries and wages, forty-two, twenty-five for payroll taxes, thirty-two hundred for retirement, two thousand for workers' comp, eleven thousand, five hundred for group insurance, two hundred for unemployment, eight fifteen for insurance, five thousand for services and fees, and that's primarily true green. Vehicle repairs of thirty-five hundred. They have a quote from Carquest to replace the transmission, which is going out in the vehicle. They do want to replace it. It's the only thing wrong with an otherwise good vehicle. They're getting other quotes, so it might be a little less, but thirty-five hundred is the quote that they're just working on for budgeting purposes.
That's everything, cost and lever.
Yep.
That's with everything. And then there's also, uh, with Carquest, the quote they're working with, there's also a six hundred dollar credit back for the whole.
Coffee.
But that's not factored in.
Are we going to change it ourselves?
I can't confirm if.
Yeah, thirty-five hundred was the quote to repair it that we got. And I'm not sure who's doing that, but a thousand dollars for equipment repairs, eighteen hundred for sewer water repairs, two hundred and fifty for supplies, a hundred for janitorial supplies, one thousand and fifty dollars for a pull behind dump wagon, six hundred dollars for agricultural supplies, eighteen hundred for gas, oil and diesel, a hundred and fifty to refurbish the cemetery sign, five hundred dollars for the annual safety conference, seven hundred dollars for electricity and seven hundred and two dollars for the hosting of our cemetery records on our website. For ninety-four thousand, ninety-two dollars, this department of the general fund had a request for three thousand dollars in additional building repairs and we moved that to the cemetery perpetual care fund. It meets the criteria of perpetual care of our cemetery. So we did not take it away from her and her plans for the year. We just reallocated it out of the general fund to save an additional three thousand dollars. So ninety-four thousand, ninety-two dollars is what we have for the cemetery and we're going to move on to parks. Parks is a few pages away. It's on page twenty-three and it is one, two, three tabs, four tabs from cemeteries on the Excel spreadsheet. Parks has one full-time, one part-time seasonal, and it's a twenty percent decrease because they lost a year-round part-time and a shared employee. Um, sixty-four thousand in salaries and wages, forty-nine hundred in payroll taxes, three thousand, three hundred and fifty in retirement, three thousand, seven hundred and fifty in workers' comp, eleven thousand, six hundred and three dollars in group insurance, two hundred for unemployment, uh, four thousand, seven hundred and twenty for insurance, ten thousand, two hundred for services and fees. That's primarily true green and then their fire extinguisher inspections. Vehicle repairs are at twenty-five hundred. Building repairs and maintenance, we have at twenty-five thousand. We need to do repairs on kidney springs and then siding repairs and painting dugouts. And we have committed to talking to the baseball groups to see if we can get some support and assistance with the dugout repairs. Equipment and repairs and maintenance, three thousand, fifteen thousand for street walk repairs. We've identified Butler Park sidewalk, trail and Freedom Trail repairs, seven thousand dollars for sewer water repairs, three thousand for fence and tool. That was higher. But we had budget in this year in 2025 and we did get confirmation. The Pas strings youth soccer association is, um, committing to half, pay for half, which they had told us in 2025 when we budgeted twenty-two thousand dollars in this budget line. And so that dropped to three thousand after confirming that. Six thousand in supplies, a hundred and fifty dollars in clothing, five hundred dollars in PPE, twenty-three hundred dollars in janitorial supplies, twelve hundred for minor, minor tools, three thousand for agricultural supplies.
Just stop there for a second. They feel comfortable at three thousand dollars is going to be enough. I know they ran out of chemicals to spray the weeds up there in this.
Uh, True Green sprays their weeds and we have ten thousand dollars budgeted for True Green. They are comfortable with three thousand. That was their request and we did not drop it.
Okay.
Thank you. Thirty-five hundred for gas, oil and diesel, five hundred for signs, ten thousand, five hundred for electricity, thirteen thousand in improvements other than buildings. That is planned for picnic tables at Centennial Park, eight to twelve, and new lighting timer and system at the pickleball court. Machinery and equipment, sixteen thousand, five hundred. We have a quote to replace our John Deere terrain cut commercial mower that we have currently with a new one. And that would be the price after trading in our existing mower and getting a ten thousand, five hundred dollar trade-in value. So that brings the parks total budget to two hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars.
Is that sprinkler system that's going down by the river in on this?
That's this year.
This year.
This year?
Yep.
And I have a question on the, the repair of the kidney springs gazebo. Don't we already have the supplies?
We don't have all the necessary supplies.
We have the columns and that is it. We've gotten quotes. We've, um, Billy's looked at it. We've had a couple, um, contractors look at it. I have been down there to look at it. And, um, there's, we're going to need to have an outside entity assist with the process to restore the gazebo. So it's much more than just putting the new columns on it. There's, there's going to be a lengthier process to it and we've already received a couple of quotes. And we've already received a couple of quotes. And what we're asking for in the budget is comparable. It's what's necessary to restore.
We did identify that it's not a safety risk, that it looks worse than it is. There are structural supports inside. It's the wood on the outside that looks like crap, but we would like to.
I know. I think a lot of people that just walk by there, they're thinking, oh, that's gonna fall over because they don't know of the support system that's inside the column.
I've been reached out to plenty by community members too, though, about wanting to see it. So I think it'd be what they have to do.
Not long ago it was restored, but it must not last very long.
The columns that we have now, they're fiberglass, so hopefully they, hopefully they'll live a little longer.
So two hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-three for parks. And I'm gonna move to libraries if there's no other conversation. Libraries is the next one to the left and the next page in your booklet, page twenty-four. For full-time, one part-time, and a part-time custodian. There's a three percent increase to salaries and wages, which is what I mentioned was the standard when there weren't other variables that changed it. Hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred for salaries and wages, thirteen thousand, sixty dollars for payroll taxes, ninety-five hundred dollars for retirement, nine hundred and fifty dollars for workers' comp, forty-six thousand, four hundred and ten dollars for group insurance, five hundred for unemployment, sixteen thousand, five hundred for insurance, twenty thousand, three hundred and ten dollars for services and fees. I would go through those, but you can read. Publishing, three hundred dollars. Building repairs, three thousand. That's primarily for servicing the HVAC. They don't have any other big projects. Needs serviced a couple times a year. Three thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars for equipment repairs, four thousand for supplies, two thousand for janitorial supplies, six hundred for travel and conference. That's a decrease because there's no more library institute because the state library got unfunded. Thirty-five hundred for telephone, eighty-five hundred for electricity, five thousand for propane. Machinery and equipment includes some new cameras and the cabling and labor required to install them at two thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. Computer software is eighty-five hundred. Books, one of the things that the library agreed to do when we had our budget meeting with the department heads was lower their book request from ten thousand to seventy-five hundred in hopes that the friends of the library will make up the difference. And I thought that was very generous of her. I asked her not to do it, but she insisted that she wanted to do something to help us make up that deficit. And so we have seventy-five hundred in books for the year. Also, books and supplies at the library are often supplemented with annual grants and donations. So we're hoping for some of that for them. And then subscriptions, four thousand, for a total budget of three hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars for the library. If there's no conversation there, I'm gonna move to the next one over on the next page, and that's the Mueller Civic Center. We have one full-time and one year-round part-time employee of the Mueller Center. And we see a two percent increase to salaries and wages over 2025 projections. It's sixty-seven thousand, six hundred in salaries and wages, five thousand, one hundred and seventy-five in payroll taxes, two thousand, nine hundred and fifty in retirement, two thousand, seven hundred and fifty in workers' comp, eleven thousand, six oh three in group insurance. And I'm sorry, I have to stop and make myself note before I forget. Two hundred in unemployment, thirteen thousand in insurance, nine thousand in services and fees, three thousand in publishing. In building repairs and maintenance, we have twenty-three thousand, five hundred. It's a dual mini-split HVAC for the annex. Eight thousand for equipment repairs and maintenance, eight thousand for street walk repairs. It has repaired concrete at rear patio. In my notes I've had that we have talked about chip sealing the parking lot that has been needed, but it's not budgeted this year. Supplies, twelve hundred, janitorial supplies, five thousand, minor tools, a thousand, six hundred in agricultural supplies, one fifty in gas, oil, and diesel, which could probably go down to a hundred, but it's only fifty bucks. You tell me. Digital sign, fifteen hundred, which a portion of the digital sign is for installation and services and fees. And that's another fifteen hundred for a total of three thousand for the digital sign, which is something that's been on and off their budgets for the last four years. Propane, which is new in 2025, we have budgeted at two thousand. We're not sure if that might be a little high. It's a backup source of heat. You remember all the conversations we had when we were cold at the Mueller Center about backup heat. We may be able to get five hundred off of that if.
It all depends on the price of propane.
And how much they end up using it as a backup.
I wouldn't say anything off.
All right, I'll leave it. A thousand for machinery and equipment because he's looking to replace a commercial vacuum. One thousand, sixty-six dollars in computer software for a total of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-four for the Mueller Center. If there's no objections, then I move on. And this one will probably not move as quickly, but it's the next one over in the next page. And that's the Economic Development and Assistance Budget.
Misty, what was that camera? On the computer software?
For the libraries?
BHT, um. Where was that? BHT sixty-six camera?
Oh, the sixty-six dollars is not the camera in the computer upgrades. That's the thousand. The Black Hills Technology sixty-six dollars is one of the. I have it in here. I can look it up. It's one of the monthly fees that we have to pay.
The camera, I think it's that camera, the council meeting.
The camera and computer upgrades are one thousand, though. The sixty-six dollars is part of the Black Hills Technology fees.
Sonic Wall, Sentinel One, Microsoft Office.
Does that answer your question good enough?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, yep. I know I have the sheet that we worked off of to estimate Black Hills Technology stuff, but believe it or not, there's a lot in here and I can't find it. So are we good? Economic Development and Assistance.
Aren't we gonna leave this one till the end?
We are, tonight is the end.
I know, but the end of tonight.
I would like to at least talk about my recommendation to remove five thousand from the Boys and Girls Club and five thousand from HPC. But if you guys all wanna move on and pass this out at the end, we can skip this one and go to the two-on-one fund.
Well, we're at the end of general.
We are.
Okay.
Well, I'll throw that back. What if we left the Boys and Girls Club at two thousand? And left the. The. And gave Historic Preservation Committee three thousand. Would that do anything?
Well, it would definitely get us down five thousand. And I still have my comments about funding a committee. I think that we should be there to respond to their requests for specific needs. But just giving them money is not something we've done to any other committee or group. So I don't think that's reasonable. But, but I'll take any suggestions because we need them and we need to make a decision and we need to move on. Anybody have any objection to that suggestion or any other suggestions?
We're taking away from the Boys and Girls Club. Yeah, what?
Eight thousand?
Drop, drop them down to two thousand, like we gave them this year.
Now, I don't think we'll drop them down eight thousand dollars myself.
Well, they've, they've been giving two thousand.
It matched, don't you, Mr.?
But here, oh, we're only, are they supposed, what did we say we was gonna give them earlier?
We didn't say.
No, we didn't say.
We, we have ten in here. I believe they requested fifteen. We had ten in there after our department head meeting. And I talked about dropping at five to come up with five more that we needed for the fire department and then getting the other five from HPC. But I would agree with Deb, two thousand is what we've given them the last two years.
Well, we need to come up with money, so, but I disagree with what we're giving three thousand dollars to.
Well, we don't have to do that. We can drop them to two and continue to talk about HPC if anybody has any other input or feedback that we haven't heard already.
Well, we promised the fire department that amount, so we need to come up with it someplace.
Pretty sure I just said it was a consideration, not a cost.
I know.
I, I agree. I think we need somewhere to get it. Anybody else?
So dropping. Which one are you guys talking about? Boys and Girls Club, is that at the top?
Yeah, HPC and I brought up the five thousand. That's not currently built into our county software and never been done before. Dropping that and then dropping Boys and Girls Club five thousand. But we do still need to make up a deficit. So then Craig mentioned, nope, Bill mentioned two thousand. Craig didn't like two thousand, but didn't share a number, but that's where we're at.
Well, I don't, like I said, two thousand, I guess that's what we gave them last year. But the three thousand Bill wants to give the historical thing, I disagree with.
Thanks for reminding everyone that it's a core municipal function. And this is, while Misty's correct, we don't fund our other committees. The comment I made earlier still stands. And our other committees are also not required. The Historic Preservation Commission is required. And small funding unlocks big opportunities. And as I stated last night, Historic Preservation is economic development. So as we're considering what we give Shedco. So those are just a couple of my notes on that.
Oh, we have a proposal on the table for two and three. Where is everybody else at?
I agree with Bill.
I agree.
With?
With Bill.
I agree.
Anyone disagree?
I don't know, I haven't made up my mind yet.
I haven't either.
And everybody agree on dropping Boys and Girls Club to two?
I am, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, we can drop that to two, because that's what we've been given.
Okay, either dropping to three or eliminating the HPC dollar amount altogether, it sounds like is the next decision we need to make.
I would eliminate, that'd be my suggestion.
I was wondering if, if they find something specific that they want to do, they could approach the council later.
Exactly.
Well, that's true, yeah.
You know, they say we have this project, we have quoted this much, we need this much. And then we look at contingency or savings then.
Well, I would say go ahead and drop it.
To Ariel's point, if that's where you wanna go, then I think you're obligating yourself to be open and honest to the request that comes from them and not continue to say no. What, what's being proposed is giving them money as they ask for it. And if that's not what you're gonna do, then I'll stand up tonight and say, no, we're not gonna give them any money throughout the year. Or give them some money to work with.
I really like the idea of this specific request. If there's something specific, it's gonna be a lot easier to consider where you're at financially. And if that money makes sense to use in that way, I, I like that.
It's more controllable. It's way, it's more controllable.
More controllable what, which way?
By them giving a request, then you know exactly what they're needing.
For a specific project.
Instead of just throwing the money out there and. Let's be honest, if you got extra money, then obviously you're gonna find other things to spend on. But if you need something particular and it's of valid reasoning and it has a request, and then it's more controllable.
Like, we don't use it very easily.
We have contingency of seventy-five thousand. So there would be some wiggle room that's already approved budget authority of something council-like that should more than cover it.
I'll be willing to hold you all to that.
Good. I, I'm, I'm willing to go with nothing. We, we need, I know we're tight and I know we're trying to get structurally balanced, but we, we stepped up and we revised our ordinance. So if there's something other than fixing our own building that we need to do to promote, and I think Andrea's right. Our sandstone's our business development. We, we need to not give a request lip service and then a no, so.
We, one thing that's been put out there is to get a specialist to come in and give an in-service or, you know, a lot of the tuck pointing our buildings.
Oh.
Bringing the educational aspect to our building owners.
So I'm okay with assessing a, a hard dollar request and funding it from contingency or supplemental appropriation.
I believe that approach also then still prioritizes and encourages the equity of all of our other commissions and committees because the library, the work planning and zoning, those are also required. I know that they have a library and planning and zoning has an office that they work out of. But I do think that in the event we have a unique and compelling case, that we address that and you can determine those needs at that time. And I think that's a good approach, so I would agree with that.
By that, we're giving our council representative permission to hold our DPC flyer.
And you're also increasing your savings, thirteen thousand dollars between the eight that we took off of Boys and Girls Club and the five from HPC. Did we wanna visit anymore about Shedco? Or are we ready to move on from this budget?
Did they not submit us a request? I thought I saw it.
I did forward you after the initial time I sent it out, you did get.
Twenty thousand.
It was Monday.
They have it for.
Yeah. And we addressed.
Twenty thousand last year.
And we addressed this last night and we came to the ten thousand dollar.
Okay, I missed that one.
Yeah, the mayor talked about talking with her and saying that he could not, well, you can say what you said. You're here.
I advocated for twenty thousand. And I shared with Andrea that asking department heads to make significant cuts, which I think the folks have all seen tonight, has been for those departments. There's not a lot of fluff. I couldn't be more conscious, advocate for twenty thousand. I needed to step up.
But just think that, you know, you cut her money in half, she's gonna do half the work. Because, you know, she shouldn't have to work for nothing. And you see that she's, what she's been doing from that letter that she did give to us. I mean, she's been rocking and rolling and bringing, I mean, what she brings is future income coming into town. If you don't think beyond this year, she's bringing stuff that will be bringing money into us year after year in the future. So I just think cutting her in half is just cutting ourselves, they're shooting ourselves in the foot.
Ten thousand's still not much. We have a lot of departments that benefit from an additional ten thousand dollars. It's still a contribution from city funds to their organization.
I'll be the first one to say I agree with Bob, ten thousand.
Everybody okay with ten?
I'm good with ten. I said that last night.
Twenty-nine thousand for total for Economic Development and Assistance. And we're gonna move on to the two-on-one fund after we take a quick look.
I'd like to make one comment before we move on.
Sure.
Recognizing that Bill had said we'll count on Deborah to hold us accountable for any requests that come from HPC, I would ask each of you to hold yourselves accountable, accountable, and not rely on Deborah to remind you of that. That's the commitment you made tonight is to honestly evaluate those coming through and to Bill's words, not use lip service.
Can we go down more?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
And take a quick step before we move to two-on-one to stop at the one-on-one general fund. With the changes that we've made, our projected losses are twelve thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars without a new full-time PD officer, one hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars with a full-time PD officer. And then I'm gonna jump to two-on-one. And we should be able to fly through the next four and then, we have four or five. And then we have some tougher ones to talk about. So I explained the two-on-one fund in detail the first night. If anybody needs a reminder, let me know. But these expenses are directly tied to that tax, the gross receipt tax that has all the different names.
What page is that on?
If you're on page twenty-eight, twenty-nine, no, twenty-eight, and you're one, two, three tabs over from where you were on your spreadsheet. The first number on here for building repairs and maintenance, put back into that number, taking our revenue, the obligation, the existing ongoing obligation of eighty percent to the chamber of the revenue, the electricity costs and the telephone costs, whatever's left, I put that in building repairs and maintenance. Since the ordinance that established this fund. Since the ordinance that established this fund said that it would be used for the upkeep and repairs of the Mueller Center and the depot, we just put the extra in there, so we have it if we need it. If we don't need it, it goes to the balance in the fund and we can use it when big expenses like roofs or something need done.
On page where?
You're on page 28.
That's where I saw it.
2-1-1, like the lodging dining sales tax fund. So 214,000 is the total in that fund using those figures. I'm going to jump then to the 2-1-2, additional sales tax fund. Explained this fund last night, it is one-third of the general sales and use 2% tax that we get. This fund has a couple of highlights, and I think a good conversation needs to be had over the first highlight, but I'm going to start at the top. We talked about the 12,000 for the social media position of the chamber. The services and fees, that's where you see that decrease. So the 2,000 left is for annual bridge inspections, and we're saving $12,000 in this budget by removing the support or, yeah, I guess, support of the chamber social media position, which doesn't exist anymore and we haven't been utilizing it as we discussed last night, the way that we had previously. The Fall River Channel repairs, we have a recommendation to put $9,750 in that to have Warren chemical spray from Jennings to Minnacotta two times annually. I have a couple of thoughts on that, and I'm not sure if this is the correct place to do it. I don't mind giving budget authority for that, but we bought, I don't know, maybe $4,000 worth of underwater weed eaters and we let those, the group from the Corps use those, and it worked, but we knew it wouldn't be a forever fix. You can't mow your lawn one time and be done with it. We haven't used them since, and I don't know, spraying one portion of a river that flows is doing much more than spending $9,700 to, for a very short amount of time, fix one spot and let it run down. I think something needs to be done, I think it needs to be done every year if we're going to maintain the growth in the river, but I'm not sure if that's a good use of city funds. That's why I have it highlighted, but it's in the budget. Doesn't mean we're going to have to do it, we can talk more about it when it comes. I do think that Fall River Channel repairs need to be budgeted every year. The next one, improvement of even buildings.
I have a comment on that.
Go ahead.
We've been working on this stretch between Jennings and Minnacotta as a public access point and and we need to continue to, I mean, it didn't get to the point where we wanted it to. When we first started the project, we were hoping that the initial $40,000 that we spent to have the guy from Custer come in and make that flat spot, and he seeded it, and then we didn't put a watering system in, so, you know, it just all died off. And then we didn't manage the weeds, and that all took off, and it looked horrible. So then last year, we put some more into it, and it started, and we're adding a watering system this year. And so I think it's not a project we should be dropping the ball on. Something like this requires a continued to create this park-like atmosphere off of Centennial Park in the center of town under our new suspended sidewalk, so.
That you spent $4 million for.
That we spent $4 million for, so we can't be dropping the ball here when it's just getting rolling and things are going to be, you know, kind of coming to fruition.
I absolutely agree, we shouldn't drop the ball. We should use the stuff we bought to keep up with it, and we're going to need to continue to do that.
Do you think $9,000 is going to clean that again?
That's just for spraying.
We need to use, we need to use those sickles or whatever they are. And I don't know if our people don't want to or aren't willing to use them. Do we need to hire someone to use them? We had the Corps use them, but then, as everything else, Doge probably cut the Corps. The Corps doesn't exist at the moment. So we're going to have to figure out how we're going to utilize those pieces of equipment to our benefit to just keep ahead of the reeds and the cattails that keep wanting to take over. And we've got those frag mighties hitting again next to the American Legion, the Friends of the River, or whatever they were called, you know, they did a... Heroic and had to give them kudos for, but that was a lot of work that they went and hand dug all those things out. And then they plasticed it off, and it lasted for a season. And now they've come back, and those things are very invasive. And they're starting to fill in between Minnacotta and the Bron. So we need to be, we need to keep up on this stuff.
We do.
Didn't Warner have a specific aquatic herbicide to address what we're trying to get rid of?
We've been, we've been having the discussions about it. We actually reached out to True Green and Warren Chemical about aquatic herbicides and the potential for who can come down and work with us on that. True, was it True Green?
Yeah.
Yeah, True Green flat out said no. They said no, and Warren Chemical did say yes, was it True Green that said no?
Yeah, I got the email.
And Warren Chemical gave us a quote, and it was...
$4,870 per application.
But I will let you know that I've already been working with Billy on this. And once it gets a little cooler and the ground hardens up a little bit, they will be going down along the river to start working on the management of the overgrown, noxious weeds and vegetation.
Would anybody mind?
Sorry.
Would anybody mind this, that used to be one of my pet projects, was the river, before I went off. And we did at one time have $60,000, $65,000 set aside to maintain and take care of the river. This falls in line with some of the experience that I have. And the reason why True Green said no is because you guys are talking about an ongoing and onflowing system, okay? You are not going to control it by chemicals. I know, I held a chemical license for 22 years. You are not going to control it that way. You can spray, it's just like you spitting in the water, you can watch it flow on down, that's what's going to happen. By the time you get penetration from top to bottom, you've diluted your chemical and it's dispersed, okay? And so you're not going to get what you think you're getting by paying somebody to spray it. It's going to have to be done by hand or machine. That's just the bottom line. And in the beginning, when we started this project, that was a given, that was understood by everybody. You're not going to control this by chemicals. It's going to have to be man labor type situation.
So I recommend we leave the amount in there, and we continue this discussion of what the appropriate place to spend that on. We know we need to spend some money managing the growth in the river. So just to move on for tonight, can that conversation continue after this meeting? We leave this $9,750 in there, but we have a conversation of what's the best way to use that money in our river next year?
And if I can, didn't Bob tell us that AmeriCorps, those kids, were not able to come back and continue?
They weren't doing anything this year.
AmeriCorps is not funded. They were part of the Doge cuts.
Yep.
So they're not going to be able to. So the original Warren Chemical conversation started with Bob Nelson Jr. And I believe it was in Belfoush, they had a similar problem. And he felt that asking or having Warren Chemical do a number of treatments significantly reduced the problem that they were having with, I'm going to call them invasive weeds. But he was the one who originally reached out to Warren Chemical to see if they would begin treating the river. To Misty's point, as long as you keep cutting them so that they visually are more appealing. And that's all we've done, is reduced the height of them, they're going to grow back. They need to be killed. They need to be eliminated. How we arrive at that is a conversation that Misty talked about, we can have it down the road. But where we want to get to is that we don't need to be going in there every year with rotary scissors. That's labor intensive. Maybe we do it once or twice, or however that works. But we need to get to a situation where we can go three, four years, or we literally eliminate the majority of them.
Do we have a budget, anything budgeted this year? Or do we need it next year for reseeding that lower area because it's all?
Our Parks Department has the agricultural supplies budget.
My recommendation would be to hold off until you take control, because of what you guys are talking about and to what Bob just said, yeah, you're going in there, you're cutting the tops off. That's only visual. The thing is, the root system of it does not go dormant. That water, that water is holding, is holding the root system live. Go ahead.
Sorry, Dave, could I suggest that we've agreed that we'll leave the $9,750 in and not design the remediation program in the budget meeting?
No, I don't care, I'm just, I'm just saying that before we change anything right now, we're better off to take a good look at it and then come up with a solution as opposed to throwing money out.
That's along the edges, I'm talking about the whole flat area that needs grass in. The top part that doesn't need true.
And that's not part of this budget.
I just want to make sure we have something budgeted for seeds for grass.
The next one is $759,700 for improvements other than buildings. And this deserves an explanation for all of you. The Minnacotta Bridge replacement, $589,000 has been budgeted for this year, and we have gotten notice that we're most likely not going to be doing construction this year. So although that number has grown, it's, we're moving unspent money from 2025 into spending it in 2026. So when you look at this projected loss, know that we're putting $589,000 back into their available cash in this fund at the end of this year, as long as you don't decide to spend it on something else. And we'll have that to utilize in addition to the revenue we'll create next year in this fund to cover these expenses. So we'd actually, without that expense carrying over, we'd have a profit in this fund. So as you look at that big number, keep that $589,000 number in mind, knowing that we budgeted for it this year. We don't plan to start construction on that bridge now until early 2026, was the last thing I heard. Any nodding heads, is that right? Might be longer than that. But we're budgeting for it for next year, and that's not the cost to replace the bridge, that's our 20%. It is a over a million dollar project.
I didn't think we were ready for bridge repair anytime soon, because the men that came up in front of us said that there were all new players and looking at it all over again, and we went right back down to the bottom of the list.
Oh, we have the big grant, we've been awarded the big grant. So we need to get the construction done in five years. So we need to keep it on our plan.
I understand that.
It's still on the plan to get done, it's getting bumped back a little bit because there were some additional studies that needed to be done. We need to, they needed to have a vast study, and they needed to have a new shed study, which, you know, we've already addressed, but it's still been approved. It's still going to happen.
In addition to that $589,000, this is where you'll see the $100,000 in road repairs that we took from the general fund and put here. And if you remember when I explained the different governmental funds and their purposes, this fund was established to fund road repairs, so this is the right place for it. And then we have Phase One of stair repairs, we have $70,700, which was going to be the city share. We have some updates on that, but we'd still like to use that budget authority. If, even if we can't start the construction of Phase One of the stairs, and Jaclyn, I'll let you kind of take that, because we've got some updates on that.
Yeah, we actually have those updates as of today. We met with the project engineer for the state, and she's the one that reviews these. It was the letter of intent for the grant. So after meeting with her today, she has suggested that we switch gears from looking at construction to look at doing a planning...
C Y planning, wasn't it?
ADA.
It's like, what am I thinking, a planning, yes, thank you, a planning study.
That's a full community.
To do a full, yeah, to do a study for the entire community, and that that study will still qualify for this grant. And then we have some other options that we'll be able to look at early next year. So I still plan on submitting the application by the deadline. And if we're awarded that, that will, we're looking at anywhere from $100,000 to $200,000 potential, which would be, we'd be, you know, 18.5% of that. So, and then we'll look at some different application processes for, or grant applications for next year for the historic staircases. So this will be a little bit longer process now, but.
So she rejected our first request, is that...
She didn't reject it, it's that in order to meet the qualifications for the state, for this TAF grant, we need to be able to provide reasonable accommodations for ADA.
There has to be alternative access, which actually, in one respect, opens doors for us. I was going to bring that up with you later on, but anyway, it actually opens up for other projects that we can, as she put it, you can put together a whole project with ADA, and they could, they could run that through the grants or the funds.
So, I was just going to say, so with this, with this planning study, you know, it'll, we still have stuff to... Once we get it, we'd have a greater chance, if they can help us figure out these reasonable accommodations, we'd have a greater chance of being able to apply for this. But I will let you know that I do intend to apply for the recreational trails grant in April that this, these staircases also qualify for, so that would be something that we'd be looking at too. So it is actively being worked on, but right now, this would be geared towards planning our, or funding our portion of the planning study, not the construction.
Which should be less, but then we might do some minor repairs to the staircases if possible to get them open in the meantime, because this has already been a two-year project. And so, you know, anybody who tells somebody to go get a grant has never tried to go get a grant, because it's not that easy. So although it's going to be a little less, we're leaving, or we're recommending to leave the $70,700 in here as a total to maybe pay for our 18.5% of the planning study, and then maybe potentially do some short-term repairs. Okay, the next two things. We have a Boulder Falls special assessment that we pay principal and interest on. That was a 10-year bond issue. We are in year nine of that. So next year will be our last year of paying for that piece. I have $173,940. The other piece of that is also related to the Boulder Falls Road project. We could not assess a portion of those improvements, and we had to take out a sales tax revenue bond, and that was a 15-year bond. And so we will be on year nine of 15 on that portion. So the big part will go away in a couple of years, but for the next two, we have to pay both of them, and then after that, we'll just have the smaller one. So $173,940 for the principal payments of those two, and then the interest is $8,070. We have no AIP projects planned for 2026. I put 25 in my notes, so I'm sorry about that, I should say 2026. And then excellent news, which I might have kind of alluded to the first night. For the first time in my time here since, the golf course has been an enterprise fund, we don't have to budget for a subsidy. Their revenue covers their expenses. So we only have the Evans Plunge Mineral Springs subsidy to pay out of this fund. And hopefully, as was mentioned earlier, once again, we won't need it, but in order to budget, we're currently at $193,435 for subsidy to plunge. I did check, and we have five years left of our note. And then after that, well, when we get to it, you'll see the expenses related to that. We'll have a significant increase in revenue to cover expenses when that loan goes away. So $193,435 for an Evans Plunge subsidy brings the total in this fund to $1,146,895. That gives us a projected loss of $276,045, but as I mentioned earlier, that's largely related to that Minnacotta Bridge project. Are we all good with that and ready to move on? Okay, 2-1-3 is going to be easy, that's the very next tab over and the very next page. 2-1-3 is our bid fund that explains the Business Improvement District. Uh, they, their revenue comes from, uh, people who stay at their, do, who wants to take a break near?
I don't know if anyone else does.
Anybody else need a break or should we just keep going along? What's that? Okay, seven-twenty, we'll just take a quick break, um, and get right back at it so we can get through the rest. One, that's a bid fund. Uh, primarily their money goes to match the, uh, get matched by the tourism grant for publishing. And then, uh, as I mentioned yesterday, when we were talking about revenues, ten thousand is committed to fireworks. Uh, eighty-nine thousand, one hundred matches their projected revenue, um, for a balanced budget in the two-on-three fund. That one was easy, the next one's gonna be easy too. That's the five-oh-one fund, the Hot Springs Capital Improvement Fund. We shared what this fund was established for, what it's been using, what it's been being used for currently. And we don't have anything projected in twenty-twenty-six, although I do know that the McCollies Vision Fund will continue to find and award funds for projects that benefit the city of Hot Springs. And you will see that dollar amount after they've awarded those on a supplemental appropriation. And that effect is zero because once they've made those decisions and determinations using their available funds, I can submit a request to the uh, foundation, the community foundation that holds those funds for that exact dollar amount. So I get in the revenue, we pay out the funds as the pass-through, um, which was the request of the McCollies when they donated the money. And so the net effect is zero, but we're, we don't have anything budgeted because we don't know how much they'll have available and how much that'll work.
And then on the side note, just to let you know or let everybody know that, uh, McCollies has informed us to where the projects were approved, what was asked for, what was the dollar amount that was approved, and they've loved every one of them so far.
Yeah, been great. Um, the next one is going to be six-oh-two, our water fund, it's the very next one over, very next page. This is an enterprise fund, um, we went through the revenue last night. These expenses, um, are a little short of the revenue, but I wanted to remind you of what we discussed about Fall River Water users and the potential revenue that may come from that. Two hundred and eighty thousand for forty percent of a full-time, uh, public works director, full-time foreman, two full-time operators, and one utility billing clerk. There's a six percent increase in this budget. Two hundred and eighty thousand for salaries and wages is estimated. Twenty-one thousand, five hundred for payroll taxes, sixteen thousand, five hundred for retirement, seven thousand, five hundred for workers' comp, forty-one thousand, five hundred for group insurance, six hundred and fifty dollars for unemployment, twenty thousand, nine hundred and fifty for insurance, forty-five thousand for services and fees. Uh, that looks like a big number, but they pay the credit card processing fees for all the utility payments they receive monthly. Um, Black Hills Technology Credit Collection Bureau, drug and alcohol testing, qualified presort to send out the bills monthly. S D eight-one-one, they do water testing, um, the D A N R has the drinking water environmental fees. There are, uh, stream gauging fees that are paid, so that's, uh, all those, um, accumulate to that forty-five thousand. We no longer are required to publish the annual water report, so we don't have any publishing anymore. Vehicle repairs, we have five thousand. Building repairs and maintenance, eight hundred seems small, but they don't really have many buildings. Ten thousand, equipment repairs and maintenance, fifteen thousand, street walk repairs. We have eighty thousand dollars budgeted for sewer, well, it's really water repairs and maintenance. That's emergency costs, standby materials, associated water line breaks, water delivery system component failures, and that's just an annual estimate. Uh, five thousand for barbed wire fencing at the Hot River Pump Station. Apparently the fencing has been down for two years, so this is a priority. We have three hundred for supplies, three hundred for clothing, P P E, eighteen hundred, seven thousand for minor tools, twenty thousand for purification chemicals, six thousand for gas, oil, and diesel, fifteen hundred for travel and conference, which includes the newly approved Western Dakota Regional Water System membership at three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Uh, telephone twelve hundred, sixty-five thousand for electricity, sixteen hundred for cell phones. And then the big one, improvement other than buildings, we have three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, we have been working on a FEMA grant, our local match, uh, is twenty-four thousand for backup generator at Hot River Pumping Station. There's also an estimated annual service fee of five hundred that in the future will be added to the four-two-two-zero-zero supplies, um, sorry, services budget in the future. They have a tower project at a hundred and thirty-five thousand, this is their highest priority project. There are old mains that need replaced in Evans Heights, a hundred and fifty thousand Birch Elm almond. We'll be doing these in-house. There are two large meters Evans and Hot River Pumping Station needs at eighteen thousand. And then as a note, Fourteenth Street also needs a main replacement, but this is a future larger project with an estimate of about five hundred thousand, it's not included in this three hundred and twenty-seven thousand. We have twenty-five thousand in machinery and equipment, that's half of a walk-behind saw and a chop saw. Computer software, four thousand, five hundred and thirty-five, that's half of the Banyan Utility Billing, the other half you'll see in the wastewater fund. It's one-third of the point of sale. It's the core and main FlexNet software, Black Hills Sentinel One and the Sonic Wall subscriptions. Uh, this fund does have debt, um, we have an S R F loan, um, and one hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and forty dollars is the principal payment this year. Um, and then we also have a lease, or a, yeah, a lease to own for J D Backhoe, and we're in five, year five of six of that one.
What, how many years are we doing on that all, I mean?
On the S R F loan? Uh, let me look that up for you real quick. It was like a thirty-year, I mean, we got it before I got here, but I have it on my. Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight more years, eight or nine more years. I have a, I only have to combine, after the first five, I only have to combine five years together. So I'm just trying to count out the number of payments I have in my debt maturity schedule. And so in twenty-twenty-five, I won't count that, twenty-six is one, two, three, four, and then there's five, six, seven, eight more payments on that one. Um, and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and forty dollars for the interest on that S R F loan. And then we have a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar transfer out for one million, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars. Does have a projected loss of sixty-three thousand, fifteen dollars. There are some significant improvements, uh, in projects that are in this budget. And knowing that we potentially will get some funding from Fall River Water Users, we're comfortable with that projected loss at this time. If you wanted to cut something from the budget, we could certainly discuss that, but, um, we do know there's revenue sources out there that we didn't account for.
Yes, quick question. When, when you have an enterprise fund that has, is showing a projected loss, can you continue to justify doing the transfer out that, that if you were to reduce, it would take care of the loss?
Well, if you reduce that transfer out, you're taking it from the general fund, which we are also working on a loss in. And those are funds that the general fund has consistently received as revenue, so we don't have a replacement for it if you take it away.
So by, by doing the transfer out, I understand that you're helping the general fund, but you're also in a position that they're going to be able to make up that, that, that deficit?
The water fund?
In the water fund.
Yep, we are anticipating that they'll be able to make up the deficit with revenue that we didn't count from Fall River.
Or any other enterprise fund with the assessment, maybe Evans Plunge.
They will have a cash balance at the end of the year.
Okay.
Yeah, they cannot, and they are within their cash balance. So they will have, they will have a cash balance, but they don't care.
And they and, uh, what's the other one? Water and, uh, solid, solid waste?
Wastewater?
They also carry a, uh, do they not have a surplus that they carry?
They do have a cash balance, yes, they have a cash balance.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you for the questions. Uh, any changes to the water fund or are we ready to move on?
Move on.
All right, uh, the next one is six-oh-four, that's our wastewater fund. That starts on page thirty-four and one tab over. Our wastewater fund has, um, one hundred and ninety thousand dollars budgeted for salaries and wages, that's a one point eight percent increase. Uh, fourteen thousand, five hundred and forty for payroll taxes, eleven thousand, two hundred for retirement, five thousand, eight hundred and fifty for workers' comp, thirty thousand for group insurance, five hundred for insurance, I'm sorry, five hundred for unemployment, nineteen thousand, nine hundred for insurance, thirty-nine thousand for services and fees. They pay the other half of qualified presort, they pay TruGreen, Black Hills Technology, they have fire extinguisher inspections, EcoLab, uh, for spraying, they're part of the S D A R W S. They have Midcontinent testing, and then new this year, ten thousand dollars for electrical work through Muth. And I say new this year, but knew that they're budgeting it. The ongoing expense has been there and they've had to figure for it. Um, and then chemical removal, they have a surplus of empty fifty-five gallon drums and they're estimating about five thousand dollars to get rid of those. They had a chemical in them. The current provider, is it Midcontinent Test, where did we get? The current provider will take their empty drums, they won't take our accumulation of empty drums. So they're looking to solve a problem that they didn't, weren't necessarily part of, but is accumulated there in that. And then, um, supply operator VESCO, nine thousand dollars is another request, adding to the increase in the services and fees to thirty-nine thousand. We have six thousand in vehicle repairs, twenty thousand in building repairs and maintenance. Uh, the roof over the boiler slash digester building needs replaced. Equipment repairs and maintenance, forty-two thousand. Um, that is, uh, increased because twenty-seven thousand has been identified as needing to make repairs to the orange jet truck. Um, sixty thousand for sewer repairs and maintenance, that's just preventative maintenance and basic materials. Fifteen hundred for supplies, three fifty for clothing, thirty-five hundred for P P E, one thousand for janitorial supplies, seven thousand for minor tools, forty thousand for purification chemicals, four thousand for gas, oil, and diesel, sixty-four hundred and travel and conference, which seems a little high, but, um, this is for two new employees to get their C D L certifications. They can't drive the jet trucks without it. We did, uh, two new wastewater employees getting certifications previously. Um, and they, we do require them to stay with us for two years, uh, or pay us back for the cost if they don't. So they have a way to recoup that investment.
As for C D L.
Uh, those of you that have been around for a while, it's not as easy as it used to be. You actually have to go to a class, instructor-led class and pass, not just passing the test anymore, so. Telephone fourteen hundred, electricity twenty-five thousand, propane twenty-eight thousand. Um, I always giggle when we get to that, you know they have to heat poop. So that's a year-round expense, that's why it's so significant, but part of their processing requires propane to do what they do, so. Eighteen hundred for cell phones, twenty thousand for improvement other than buildings. We are also working on a FEMA grant for a backup generator at our wastewater treatment plant. Our local match is estimated at twenty thousand, and there'll be a future estimated annual service fee of four hundred dollars that will be budgeted in the four-two-two-zero-zero fund. Machinery and equipment, sixty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, that's for the other half of the walk-behind saw, a two-man scissor lift, which is very important to them, and a septic suction trailer for twenty-eight thousand, which is also very important because maintenance at the plant requires constant suction. And we are currently paying a third party to do that. And if they, um, can spend this twenty-eight thousand dollars, then we'll be able to do those things ourselves when they're needed. And one of the problems with having a third party do it when it's an emergency is they're not always available to come right away. So that was a very important request, um, when we visited with that department. Computer, uh, computer software, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars. Uh, they also have debt, S R F loans, the principal is sixty-six thousand, one hundred and forty. The interest is fifteen thousand, seven hundred. And looking at the debt maturity schedule, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight payments on that one also. Um, left. And then a hundred and twenty-five thousand in transfer out brings the sewer department at eight hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars. Um, and they are projecting a profit of seventy-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars. I had a note on both water and wastewater that I wanted to share, just that these funds need to begin focusing on budgeting for reserves. Anybody who's been around a while knows that when something goes wrong in water and wastewater that was unexpected, it's a big expense. So I'm happy to see that wastewater was able to budget for a profit so that they can start to rebuild the cash balance that was depleted during the infrastructure improvement projects that went along with the road project.
Those hundred and ninety thousand wages, that's for four, one, with Tracy?
Forty percent of the full-time, yep, forty percent of his wage are full-time foremen and two full-time operators.
And one part-time.
And one part-time operator.
Then we're fully staffed right now?
Right now, we are fully staffed, which has not happened in that department, and we hope that it stays consistently that way. All right, uh, next one is six-one-two, that's a solid waste fund. I think I gave you my spiel about how I wish I could make that go away, but I can, a hundred percent of collected revenue goes to the provider, two hundred and seventy-five thousand is what we have estimated for services and fees. Three hundred for repairs and maintenance, five hundred and fifty for supplies and materials, and ten thousand dollars is a transfer out. With the projected revenue, this two hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollar projected expenses leaves us with twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars as a projected profit. Are you matching? Three fifteen, we took the one hundred dollars. Um, so the, uh, solid waste fund, we buy the refuge totes. And we have, if you look back at the expenditures in twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three, we put quite a bit of money into getting all new totes, and so we're good for a little while. But that twenty-nine, one fifty will add to a reserve that will help us be available to, or be able to replace those in the future when we need to again. And that's the solid waste fund. The next one is six-twenty, our golf course fund, that's page thirty-seven. Uh, if you remember when we reviewed the revenue for the golf course, there's just one revenue tab, and I told you that we separate the departments between golf course and maintenance and the pro shop.
Let me back up a second.
To where?
This solid waste fund, does that include cleanup days too?
Yes.
Does that come out of here?
Yep.
The free dump days and, okay.
Yeah, that is what the additional funding is typically used for. All right, so golf course, the first one, um, is the maintenance. We have two full-time employees, a superintendent and equipment manager that are full-time year-round. And then, as we've talked before, we try our best to estimate all the various part-time and seasonal wages, but it's difficult because the seasons vary greatly based on weather. Um, we have two hundred and fifteen thousand budgeted for salaries and wages, that's a three percent decrease. Sixteen thousand, five hundred for payroll taxes, seven thousand, five hundred and ten for retirement, twenty-eight hundred for workers' comp, twenty-three thousand, two hundred and five dollars for group insurance, seven hundred dollars for unemployment, nine thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars for insurance, two thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars for services and fees, that's their Toro, N S N, uh.
Irrigation, I T support.
Irrigation, I T support, thank you, um, and Black Hills Technology. Publishing was moved to the pro shop budget in twenty-twenty-three, so we have nothing there any longer. Vehicle repairs are at two hundred, building repairs and maintenance are at three thousand, equipment repairs and maintenance are at eight thousand. New in twenty-twenty-five, we broke out golf course repairs and maintenance as that moved from the pro shop budget to Jason, or I'm sorry, to the maintenance budget.
Golf cart.
Golf cart.
You said course.
Oh, golf cart, thank you. Uh, street walk repairs, eight hundred, irrigation, ten thousand, three thousand for pumps, motors, and V F Ds, five fifty for supplies, two hundred for clothing, two hundred for P P E, four hundred for janitorial supplies, thirteen hundred for minor. Thirteen hundred for minor tools. Three fifty for agricultural supplies. One fifty for landscape materials. Four thousand for sand. Twelve thousand five hundred dollars for fertilizer. Thirty-five hundred dollars for pesticides. Three thousand for plant growth regulator. Thirteen hundred for wetting agent. Twenty-one hundred for seed and sod. Two thousand for trees and flowers. Ten thousand for gas, oil, and diesel.
Why such an increase on flowers?
Annual flowers for whiskey barrels, maybe some trees he wants to plant. I can tell you they don't need a subsidy, they have a surplus, so we could cut it, but it's not really necessary. It's what they requested. Do you remember him having a specific request related to that?
No, he, no. And his notes are really thorough, but, um, he was also, he went through it pretty quickly and sure he knew pretty much what he wanted, so.
Ten thousand gas, oil, and diesel. Thousand for signs. Twenty-five hundred for travel and conference. Eight fifty for telephone. Eight thousand for electricity. Twelve hundred for propane. Five forty for cellphone. Which new this year, uh, besides the three hundred for the golf superintendent cellphone reimbursement, they're looking for iPad service for their Toro N S N I T irrigation software. The tablet, every employee can take it out and they can do things on it. So service for that will come out of that cellphone budget, five hundred and forty. Improvement other than buildings, we have twenty thousand dollars. Um, the C I P includes extending the irrigation mainline, which was in the master plan irrigation design. Approximately twenty-two hundred feet of four-inch H D P E pipe. Black dashes are the notes in that. Twenty thousand nine hundred and seventy-five for machinery and equipment. The superintendent needs a new laptop and a utility cart are included in that. Six hundred and seven for computer software. Brings this portion of the golf course budget to four hundred and three thousand six hundred and seven dollars. And this is the page where I have the projected revenue without the subsidy listed. The expense from both departments listed. And so this golf course fund is showing a projected profit of seventeen thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars. Uh, if we hit revenue projections and keep our expenses in mind for twenty-twenty-five.
How many full-time employees? You got one at pro shop and two at golf course?
That's correct.
But the rest is all for part-time.
That's right, part-time seasonal. All right, so moving on to the pro shop, uh, which is still a little kind of under the golf course, but on a separate tab. And then starts on page thirty-nine for you. We have one full-time operation manager. We're estimating all part-time and seasonal. There's a twenty-one percent decrease in the estimation as our previous golf operation manager was started at top of step. And our current one did not. And then estimating seasonal and seasonal helping hours is really difficult. So ninety thousand is the amount we have projected for salaries and wages for this budget. Six thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars for payroll taxes. Twenty-seven hundred dollars for retirement. Two thousand two hundred dollars for workers' comp. Eleven thousand six hundred and three dollars for group insurance. Four hundred for unemployment. Five thousand one hundred ninety dollars for insurance. Thirteen thousand for services and fees. Uh, big part of that is their light speed software, which they do a lot of things with. This is primarily for the credit card processing fees. Black Hills Technology and fire extinguisher service. Licenses is three hundred dollars. That tracks food service and malt beverage licenses. Publishing is nineteen thousand. Um, that move, that is what moved from Jason's budget in twenty-twenty-three. And that a, almost all goes to light speed, uh, which we pay for our website, email marketing. There's a digital marketing expert we're using. There's a branded app. We, um, included e-commerce, excuse me, e-commerce this year that allows people to make purchases through the online site. And then for print advertising, they have the Fall River Welcome Guide and the city map for a small portion of that. Building repairs and maintenance, we have five thousand. Equipment repairs and maintenance, five hundred. Um, if you see in years past, that was higher. That's because they used to do all the maintenance on the carts here. Supplies, thirty-five hundred. Material and equipment for resale, twenty thousand. On-sale wine, three hundred. On-off sale beer, thirty thousand. Other materials for resale, twenty-five hundred. Clothing, and this is not clothing for them to wear, this is for resale, ten thousand five hundred. We have nothing in the special order clothing or equipment for resale because that should be offset by collecting an unbudgeted revenue if it, if it happens. Janitorial supplies, we have twenty-five hundred dollars. Minor tools, five hundred. Landscape material, five hundred. Gas, oil, and diesel, six thousand. Food for resale, thirty thousand. Fifteen hundred dollars for signs. Three hundred for food safety testing and certification. Eighteen hundred in telephone. Eight thousand in electricity. Three thousand eight hundred in computer software. Again, that includes the light speed software. They charge us a different rate in season than out of season. Black Hills Technology Sentinel One and a Sonic Wall. And the pro shop total is two thou, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And again, the golf course fund is showing a small profit. The next one is Evan's plunge. Evan's plunge is found on page forty-one. It's the next tab over. We talked a little bit about the subsidy necessary in the two-on-two, so any changes to this fund, if you find any, I'm not sure you will, um, will affect that fund as well. Um, we have four full-time and various part-time positions in this fund. We estimate the best we can, um, and it was estimated at five twenty-seven-five. But we lowered it with the department head consent, looking at history of salaries and wages, year-to-date salaries and wages for this year and trying to be more reasonable in the expectation for, um, the subsidies. So we have four hundred and twenty-five thousand in salaries and wages.
Question, is, is it possible, I guess, to raise that and increase staffing? So that they could be open on Tuesdays at least during?
The Evan's plunge advisory committee has talked about opening on Tuesdays and do not feel that the, and this, the department head as well, do not feel that they had, it's not increasing staffing. It's finding the staff available to work the hours consistently, and they don't feel comfortable doing that.
Okay. Um, also, uh, Tuesday is, um, is a really productive day for them, so they might be closed. But they complete a lot of, um, in-house training, a lot of cleaning and maintenance that needs to be done that they can't do. Um, when there's, you know, people coming in and out, um, and they, yeah, they use it for I S T. And it's, it's a really productive day for the employees, so.
And the staffing challenges have been consistent.
Yeah, I, okay, thank you.
Great question. Um, with the decrease, uh, flowing down to all the affected areas, it does. We have thirty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-five for payroll taxes. Eleven thousand for retirement. Nine thousand for workers' comp. Forty-six thousand three hundred for group insurance.
Who? Why is that so much higher than last year?
Um, because the department head, the facility director previously did not take city insurance. And the new one does. So we budget for what is actual, is offered to all employees. Not everybody takes it, but that is the reason for the increase.
That's a.
Eleven thousand. Yeah, that's how much our insurance costs for one employee per year. Eleven thousand six hundred and three dollars, yeah. Twenty-five hundred for unemployment. Twenty-eight thousand three hundred for insurance. Twenty-five thousand for services and fees. A large part of that is credit card processing fees. Uh, they also pay serval, Black Hills Technology, Squarespace. They have fire extinguisher maintenance. And then they pay a U S bank paying agent bond fee, and they pay door security. They have twenty-five thousand for marketing and advertising. Fifty-two hundred for building repair and maintenance. Eleven thousand for equipment repair and maintenance. Nothing budgeted for street walk repairs and maintenance. And again, they're already at a deficit, but, uh, there are notes that they want to chip seal the north and south side parking lots and repair patch in the south side of the parking lot. If we can increase revenue in this fund by the end of the year, maybe they can look to do some of those things. Sixteen thousand in supplies. Twenty-one thousand in other material for resale. Five hundred for clothing. Janitorial supplies are at eleven-five, and I have a note, I don't know if that's high enough, but Kari was comfortable with that figure. Five hundred for minor tools. Fifteen hundred for landscape. Four thousand for purification chemicals. Twenty-seven thousand for food, that's food for resale. Two thousand for signs. Twelve hundred for travel and conference. I did share just the other day after seeing that note, some links with Jaclyn to share with Kari. Um, because we do have management, H R, and safety training available through our partnership with the South Dakota Public Insurance Lines and workers' compensation. So we have twelve hundred in travel and conference there, but I did note that interest and shared some free resources that the city has that might help her develop those skills without a lot of expense.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yep. Twenty-eight hundred for telephone. Fifty-five thousand for electricity. Seven thousand five hundred and thirty for machinery and equipment. They have two new drinking fountains being requested, suit spinners, A E D trainer, L G radios, backboard for outdoor pool, and two treadmills at thirty-two hundred. Computer software, three thousand five hundred and thirty. That's their Sportsman point-of-sale annual fee and Black Hills Technology. We are in year six of ten, um, for our sales tax revenue bonds at the plunge. The principal payment in twenty-twenty-six will be one hundred and thirty thousand, and the interest will be fourteen thousand nine hundred. For a total of nine hundred and nineteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars in the plunge with projected revenue of seven hundred and twenty-six thousand three hundred and fifty. We will be talking between now and twenty-twenty-six with Evan's plunge advisory committee and facility director about the fees. They haven't raised the fees since we got it in twenty-fourteen. And so our goal is to increase revenue in this fund, at least sufficient to cover the majority of the expenses. So that's a project we'll be working on, but we don't budget for revenue we haven't collected yet. So we don't see those increases in our revenue projections, but we're hoping that subsidy, if needed, is going to be quite a bit less.
Those discussions have, have begun already, so great recommendations coming out of finance.
Why are those discussions delayed so, so much?
I, I guess we had talked about them each year. Um, last year, we went through a full fee review and increased a number of fees. And they were very high when we purchased the facility, but we all know so much has changed. And there was some resistance coming from the committee and the plunge director. But I think we've overcome some of that resistance with these facts. And so now we have a new, uh, city administrator and a new facility director, and the conversations are now moving forward. Great question. So I always forget that there's one more fund after six-twenty-one, um, but I'm not going to forget this year. I have actually even forgot to put it in an appropriation or in this one year when we had money appropriated. And that is the seven-oh-one Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund. We don't very often, um, budget out of this fund, and historically, we haven't had enough since statute requires we have a reserve of fifty thousand. But now we have an excess of that, and we have funds available for projects. And I have talked with Lori about the fifteen thousand that's unspent and budgeted from this year for wall repairs. And they are working with contractors to try to get that done this year. And next year, the three thousand dollars that we talked about in the cemetery budget for new siding that's necessary on the shed that hasn't had maintenance in thirty years is being recommended to be paid for out of the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund. We have about twenty-five thousand, give or take, available. Um, and so that's a, um, that's, that necessary improvement is something that we can afford to pay for out of this fund. That gets us through everything except for the P D and the general fund. We have one hour till nine o'clock. We don't have to use the whole hour. So I'm going to direct you back to the four-two-one-hundred. Um, I believe that's the last place we have any lingering conversation left. So, um, the way it sits now, we're still the same as the update I gave. Uh, after we finished with the economic development, we are at a projected loss of twelve thousand three hundred and twelve dollars without a full-time officer. One hundred and nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars if we add the full-time officer this year. Just take it from here.
Well, as we talk about the police department, uh, and just desire to be out here by eight fifteen. Uh, I just want to, uh, share with you that Chris mentioned today, we've, uh, always talked to the folks about if we need another night, we can schedule another night. Uh, but it wouldn't happen this week. The Mueller Center is full, so we would, uh, for Thursday and Friday. So we necessarily would be working, looking at it next week. For an additional meeting.
But we don't need it.
They could get chatted. So we're back to the elephant.
Now, I know it isn't much money, but like, may you correct me if I'm not, if I'm wrong. When the city bought the plunge, when we hired, uh, maintenance person, that was for the city hot spring, not for just the plunge. The police department hires Nelson Oil and Gas to change a fuel, uh, furnace filter. Why can't our maintenance person from the plunge run down there and do that? I know it's piddly money, but it keeps adding up if you keep doing things all the time. I, I just, I don't know, but.
Is there a situation that we can't utilize the maintenance guy?
Well, the later change darks for us while we needed it done for a while, so. Our manager does it now.
He was hired for the city hot springs, not just plunge as a maintenance person.
Well, he's paid fully out of the plunge budget, and he, they need him. They have him busy all the time.
How long does it take to change air filters?
Yeah, we have a whole maintenance department and the general fund too.
How does that make the police department whole?
Doesn't, it's just a.
I don't, I'm just saying, little bits adds up. I mean, why pay Nelson's? Because I'm sure service calls fifty, sixty bucks. Change a furnace, hell, I'll do it for free if they want me to.
Those are great conversations to have.
How does that make our police department whole? That's what we need to address.
Well, I don't, I'm just, we're trying to get money. But we're spending money on things that don't need to be, in my opinion, like that.
I, I don't disagree with where you're going with it, Craig. I'm just wondering how that addresses the police department budget.
Fifty bucks for the police department?
Pardon?
Another fifty bucks for the police department. They wouldn't have to pay someone else to do that. That's why I'm getting that, Bob. We spend money for the city, which we shouldn't on some things.
But I, I think those are fair conversations to have going forward. I'm still trying to understand how it fixes the police department.
It, it don't fix it for another officer, no.
Okay.
We stopped the city all, don't we?
Nope, we don't.
We did?
Yep. Where are we at?
So last week, Gary had deferred to getting through recovery all the other departments to see how that may or may not change his opinion. Uh, but Randy had changed to, uh, yes, which put us, puts us at, uh, four council members supporting the additional position, which means it will go forward in the budget. Recognizing that if we do that, we're still taking money out of savings to balance.
Or cut it on its own.
Going forward.
How much are we taking our savings to balance at?
It'd be a hundred and nine thousand if we add an officer.
One hundred and nine thousand?
Yes.
Seven one fifty.
For reoccurring.
For ongoing increasing.
Without the officer, it's twelve thousand.
So we're doing pretty good, really.
Twelve thousand is pretty good.
Yeah. And, uh, just going through everything, we really didn't cut too much on these budgets, apparently the.
They did before you got it, so.
That's going to be my next question.
Yep.
So it looks like they've really.
I'd just like to say that, to me, that's a much better process than us cutting their budgets. So thank you. So thank you.
At least they have.
Yeah, and they know better than we do, so thank you for doing that.
I agree with you. And in their, sitting in their seat, they, they've controlled what has been cut as opposed to us sitting here not knowing how we're going to impact with actual work.
I'd also like to say too that the department heads throughout the last, I'd say probably six months, at the department head meetings, you know, it's been put out by myself and the mayor to really focus on what this upcoming year is going to look like. And I, I think they really did that going into this. It made the conversations, which this is my first round of these discussions, but it made those conversations easier for me to have, and that helped us meet the deadlines for the finance office. And then, as you stated, I think it made the conversations tonight a lot easier. So I don't know anything about this process, and I think it went fairly smooth, and there's some things I'd like to even out next year, but, so kudos to the department heads for the work they did and sticking to more bare bones.
I think this process was a lot better than a lot of the ones in the past.
Yeah, it was a lot less to come up with this year than...
Right. Because we don't really know what we're cutting on certain departments when we have to do it ourselves. Misty, will you?
For the folks that have been through this process before, what I recognize tonight is you have much less questions about the expenditure that were put in front of you. Well, how about this, does that need to be there? Does that need to be there? Because their budgets are very frugal.
They are.
They've made those significant cuts.
Do we have any big, huge machinery this year like we've had in the past? I mean, those four hundred dollar, four hundred thousand dollar pieces of...
Not good at...
And that's because council has stepped up in the past, recognizing that...
We fill those up.
Equipment wears out, and you can increase the maintenance budget, but all you're doing then is putting projects at risk because that large piece of equipment may fail when they need it to work. And we had that situation a couple of years ago when they had scheduled some work on Garden Avenue, and they brought the front end loader down and worked on it, and it pooped out in the middle of the project, and they ended up renting one and taking hours up to have it repaired.
I have a question. The four thousand, was it four thousand? Worn chemical to spray the river, the cattails and whatnot that's down there, that with your explanation, it's just going to run down the river anyway. It isn't going to do any good because we're not getting it by the roof. Can we cut that dollar amount and...
That was the two one two fund, so it's a different fund. You can cut it, but it's not going to address the deficit in the general fund. We decided to leave it in there because we didn't budget anything else for fall river repairs and have that conversation later. It was ninety-seven fifty.
My bad.
That's okay.
I have a question for you.
Anyway, let...
Go ahead.
Let's think about cutting that until we can, even though it don't affect this, but...
We still need river money.
We still need river money.
It gives us money for...
Probably have to do it in-house anyway.
But it don't mean we have to use it for that with our staff.
Yeah, we can leave it in there. It doesn't mean we have to use it. We should have more discussion about that.
I would really recommend and appreciate that, and I know there's a lot of other people that would too.
They don't want chemicals in the river and stuff.
I picked on Craig. How does that fix the police department budget? Thank you.
Well, setting the police discussion aside, and looking at the twelve thousand dollar deficit that we're looking at right now, and given that the department heads have given us a very bare bones budget, how comfortable or uncomfortable would you be adding some sales tax revenue to the revenue spreadsheet to at least bring that twelve thousand, whatever we are, deficit up to zero?
I think that you could cut. I mean, I think that I did a good job estimating the sales tax revenue, and as people's budgets get tighter, purchasing goes down. I'd be a little concerned with just bumping it up to balance it. I'd rather find cuts to balance it. But I would say that it'd be pretty easy to find one-time expenses, like the thirteen thousand dollars in picnic tables, to justify the added expense not being an ongoing increasing expense, but a one-time expense. You had sixteen thousand five hundred for a mower. You had thirteen thousand for picnic tables.
I left the picnic tables alone this year because I've...
Took them off, and I'd like to leave them alone, but if...
For two years, I've thrown a hatchet at them, so...
If we're just increasing revenue to balance it, I'd rather just say use savings and leave our estimates.
Would you split the difference?
Tell me which one you think needs to be raised and which amount in our projections in the general fund. Are you thinking the general sales and use tax?
That's only because you've said that you've already put the maximum in on property tax, so that's...
Yep, then that can't be higher.
That's not negotiable.
So six, you'd want to add six thousand to that budget estimate?
Yes.
I'm going to look at where we're at here to date and talk through that with you.
While Misty's looking, if I'm understanding your question correctly, Bill, you've referenced twelve thousand and trying to find twelve thousand. We're not at twelve thousand because we have five council members that want to keep the police position, so that puts us at ninety-seven.
No, I know that.
A hundred and nine.
Gary was still thinking, and so I was giving him some more thinking time and depending on where his thought landed.
Well, Misty's looking up there.
I, I can see it. We're at forty-two percent year-to-date. We are one month behind in collections for our estimates for this year. I, I don't feel super comfortable adding six or twelve, but if you wanted me to, I would. But I just really don't like to not hit revenue projections, and I don't have a crystal ball for what we're going to get next year or any changes the legislature might pass in July of next year, which has happened to us this year too.
No, I have a question. I was going to ask City Hall, are yells getting arised?
We budgeted for, which was a net decrease, changing where those dollars for the media were, are getting paid out of.
We're, we're taking it away from the chain. Okay. So if we do, it's, it's covered.
Yes, in fact, more...
I'm sorry I said your name.
It's okay.
Everyone knows.
Well, yeah, but...
We tried, we tried.
We try not to use anybody's name, any employee throughout the city.
Does that ex, does that hundred and nine thousand deficit, does that include the extra ten thousand that you're considering for the fire department?
Yes, I added that already. We already added that by removing it from the...
Sure, I think so.
It was already covered, yep. We already increased that.
So we've saved the twelve thousand we have, and we've allocated it, but hasn't been decided to give it.
Correct.
That was supposed to be a future discussion.
It will be. And I'm not sure, and the officer, this is what we need to focus on. We've talked through all these other things. Are we adding an officer or not? Are we, if we don't, are we working to get the twelve-three-twelve gone, or are we comfortable with it?
I'm hoping not, and like I said last night, I, I wanted to support them. But there's things that, if we add another officer right now, when we're, mind you, a small deficit, but yet a deficit. If anything happens, if a car goes down, we have a major malfunction with electronics, it doesn't matter what it is, you're adding on top of that. And rounding it up is a hundred thousand, just rounding it up. But you add, and we've gone through this before. Some of us that were on council, when we had a brand-new car, all electronics, all that stuff, the car took a major hit, and what did we have to do? We had to spend...
We had to part it out.
Yeah, a brand-new car. And then we had to go and, and do, and process another vehicle and the electronics and everything else because the electronics was not swapped from one car to the other. So if we, just using that as an example, I'm not saying it's going to happen yet, but that's a bit. But if something like that comes up, you could take that hundred thousand, and you could possibly add another hundred thousand to it. So all that we have done has, would be taken away. And, and that's what I want everybody to think about.
I'd like to preface this statement with, once again, I understand that everyone in this room prioritizes safety, and we respect everything that our police department does and will continue to do. How can you ask and expect every other department head to provide and, and be thorough and give you a bare-bones budget this year? And they all did. How can you expect them to do that? And then this request comes along, and it's in front of you, and you, I understand the consideration.
Put all the efforts everywhere else and prioritize this one above all.
Just, just like, we don't have a mechanic for the city because we don't pay enough money.
We have an opening.
Well, I know we have an opening, but nobody's going to take it at that wage.
Can't sit there and ask every other department and department head to, to, to give you a lights and water budget, a bare-bones budget, and then pick and choose which ones we think are the most important because it's what sits in our hearts at the moment.
And you all heard what I told, what I asked the fire department, if they can get through one more year. Somehow or another, we worked out a way to give them ten thousand more. But that's basically going back to what we've been giving them over the years. I just don't see us putting the whole city through the situation of cut yourself here and there just to turn around and spend a hundred thousand dollars. If you just take that hundred thousand dollars and deplete it through all the departments, you still wouldn't be giving anybody any good. They would still be short of what their actual budget should be. So I just don't find it right.
Are we five to three or four to four?
Let me just come back here just a second. Just make a couple comments. First of all, kudos to the department heads. Look like they really, I'd like you to pass that on when you get the opportunity. It looks like they really got the pencil off, sharpened it up. And that's my first comment. Andy, the police officer, is that something, is that kind of Johnny come lately, sort of a deal, or is that always been on the...
We talked about it last year.
Don't like last year, do you?
We deferred it. We agreed they needed an officer last year, but we deferred it because I am twenty-eight, not knowing where it was going to go.
And an unbalanced budget.
Pardon me?
And an unbalanced budget.
Yeah, and so now this year, again, they're asking for that position.
Maybe in a year, we can get it.
And is there, is there any place on the police budget that they could be cut here if they want the officer bad enough? Is there any place to cut there at all?
No, in fact, with the new officer, they're agreeing to use existing supplies for radio, body camera, handgun, with all accessories, rifles, computers, cell phone. Well, we don't have budget for that, so no, they already did cut theirs a little bit, and there's no more room to cut to afford ninety-seven or one thousand.
I've worked on my personal things. I was trying to put my wants here and my needs here. Sometimes I get blurred based on how badly I want something. I can change a want into a need. I argue this just with myself is sometimes most possible. Is, if a new officer, is that truly, truly, truly a need?
I think it is. I think that we need to focus on figuring out how we can afford it. Because when you approve a new officer, that expense is not going to go away. It's going to increase each year. So we have to be able to afford it ongoing. It's not a one-time expense. We're getting closer. We are closer this year than we were last year. And if we focus on tightening our belts, making sure the dollars we spend are for legitimate public purposes, and we're getting the best value possible, and increasing our revenue in areas where we can, we potentially could afford it next year. I can't make any promises, but I think we'd be closer next year.
Okay, the follow-up question through that is, can we afford it right now?
Your budget doesn't say so.
You're offering ten thousand dollars.
And as you all have acknowledged, you know, the department heads presented you with bare-bones budgets, I would suggest, I would offer that the police chief also did that when you look at all of his other expenditure. He, he's not asking for another vehicle. There's a number of items that you could have asked for that he didn't. So he did present, in my mind, a very reasonable budget, recognizing that he was going to be asking for another officer, and that's where he put his focus. So he needs to be given credit for not inflating anywhere else in an attempt to be able to support the additional officer. The reality is, it's a ninety-seven thousand dollar ask.
Looks to me like everybody, everybody has done as good a job as they can do. Oh, I agree. And the reality, man, so we've got, we've got something that costs ten bucks, we all got nine dollars. Isn't that simple?
Can I ask just one other quick question? Several weeks ago, at the council meeting, I approached the council, and I, I asked on behalf of property taxpayers that you look at this budget very carefully, which you have. I applaud you, and I applaud you in going through the figures, and I see the reductions and so forth, and I, and I'm very much appreciative of that. But I also asked if you would approach this budget on a lights and water aspect, keeping the lights on and the water flowing. If you do not grant this extra officer, are the lights going to go off? Is the water going to stop flowing? Is this the only way that you keep the lights and the water going?
Deborah asked for a new vote. Is there any more discussion?
I have to say my mind's set.
No, let's, Gary, you waited the longest, but started you first.
Yep, I have waited, given a great deal of thought. Everybody recognizes that. And everything being what it is, I, with regret, I think I'm going to have to hit the plug button and say that we defer that to them right here. I just don't think we have the money to, must, I change my vote.
Deborah?
Still no.
Linda?
I'll, I'll say yes.
Yes, Ruby?
There are two? Bill?
I have, I should probably give you a one-word answer, but I'm just not able to do that right now, so... My concern is the officer safety issue, the unknown risks. So I'm going to answer your question now, Bob. With the police department, I don't believe it's a, if, if we were talking a car or some bits and pieces, nuts and bolts, to me, that's a, a lights and water issue. For the, for the question that the chief is, is asking, it's hard. It, it's too subjective. If nothing happens, we don't need it. So it's still a yes for me. And I, but I'm also...
Bill, I can appreciate that, and I can respect that.
And I'm also extremely conflicted because I know if, if it were to pass, that it's coming out of not a signed fund balance, and that is not sustainable. So I understand my answer.
If I could just make a quick comment, I appreciate what you're saying, and I, I totally agree with you for saying that it's just a subjective nonsense, the officer's safety and following that through.
And I understand. I, it's, you know, this has been a great discussion. It's been a sucking discussion, but so, go ahead, Andy.
Yes. I, I believe my constituents have reached out to me, and they would like it, and that's why I'm going to vote.
Great. Great.
So, I constituents reached out to me too.
So, where we were last night, we don't have enough support for the position.
So do we keep hammering away at the twelve or are we okay with that?
Council?
Do what?
Or do we keep hammering away at the twelve, three-twelve, or are we okay accepting that as a small deficit?
I can accept that as a small deficit with the understanding of what you're saying about as, as the year goes by, that we could possibly cover that. I think that is reasonable.
All right.
That's my personal opinion.
So, go around the table. I'm okay with that. Randy?
Yeah.
Great?
Yeah.
Gary?
Me too.
Linda?
Yep.
Jared?
No.
You wanna stay?
Pardon me?
You wanna stay?
No, I just-
You're, I gotta be argumentative.
Someone has to get rid of the picnic table.
You're gonna make me stand up and stomp my feet up and down if you go back.
They were trying to sell some properties, how proper can you-
No, we need to keep them.
You've looked at the budget for two thousand twenty-six.
I just was looking at a revenue source. I hadn't heard of what happened.
I want to echo what Carl and Bob had said. I really appreciate professionally and personally these last two nights. I think you folks have done a wonderful job in addressing where we're at and getting us as close as I've been involved with the structurally balanced budget since I've been on council. And I have been one of those votes that there was some significant dollars that we took out of, how to say?
I have one final comment too.
Thank you to the ladies up front, Misty, Ariel and Jacqueline, for helping get us where we're at and helping us understand what we're doing. Thank you, everyone.
Go ahead, Misty.
Yeah, one final comment. So as we meet as a governing body throughout twenty twenty-six and you have requests in front of you for unfunded projects, remember that this police officer is something we've all identified, this additional police officer is something we've all identified as a priority for next year and it's gonna be really, if it's the twenty twenty-seventh's budget, it's gonna be really important next year that we focus on ways that we can get to make that happen.
In other words, don't get weak.
Don't forget.
Don't get weak.
Maybe start cutting other places.
We can't go yet.
We can't, Bill?
No.
Can I give a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion? Anybody I wanna talk about?
I'm happy that it's eight-thirty. Let's do it.
Well, I think we should go back to what-
Mayor!
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Great. Thank you.
Motion passed.
I should've been sitting on that, right?